Okay, so, good evening, folks. We will call this meeting to order, please. So the first thing that I will ask for is a roll call. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay, so, we have no committee. The whole closed meeting. We do have some added's with some communication items. Can I have a mover for the added's, please? Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor George. Please vote. Still waiting on one person to vote. And that carries. Thank you. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, then we will move through to the first motion. It's a motion to waive the procedural bylaw in order to amend the council agenda. This is so we can deal with the information reports and briefings first before looking at the transit plan. Can I have a mover for that motion, please? Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Bohm. Please vote. And that carries. So with that, we will move to information reports. So our first information report will begin with a briefing. Marty Vendetti, Senior Manager, Client Relations and Development Services, and Ian Semple, Manager, Service Development, Transportation Services, will provide a briefing with respect to Information Report Number 16-306, Implementation of Updated Cash-in-Lieu of Parking Bylaw and Zoning Bylaw Amendments to Implement Updated Parking Ratios. Mr. Semple.
So, we'd like to begin with the [inaudible]. Telling you about changes that are being proposed to the parking ratios through the city zoning bylaw, and in conjunction with that, updates to the cash-in-lieu-of-parking In your report, you will see a study area that includes the downtown and harbor and Williamsville area, and that's the area of focus that we're speaking about with these changes. The city's existing cash-in-lieu-of-parking bylaw provides a financial contribution in lieu of providing parking on-site. At present, it only applies to the downtown and the harbor area, and it only applies in a very limited circumstance for conversions and renovations of existing structures, converting it into a residential use. Fees that are collected from this program go into the Public Parking Reserve Fund, and the fee is currently set at $3,000 per space. The existing levy, that $3,000 per space, doesn't appropriately account for the cost of the city to develop any public parking facility or any public parking spaces. From the planning side of pieces, the city looks at certainly the official plan, our transportation master plan, and the Williamsville Main Street area to inform the ways in which we want to provide parking, both in our development and in the public context. And as part of that, we've been looking at updated parking standards for, as part of the zoning bylaw consolidation, the comprehensive zoning bylaw review, but looking at those standards specific to some areas, specifically the Williamsville area and the downtown and harbor area. As part of that, we're looking at parking maximums, parking minimums, and ways in which we can share parking for mixed-use developments. You'll see on this chart, which is included in your package, some of the recommended parking ratios that we're looking at implementing and the changes that are proposed for that, most notably the change to the multi-unit residential, changing it from, recommending a change from one space per unit, or 1.4 spaces per unit, down to .75, including the visitor parking. So, any updates that we make in the city zoning bylaw related to the parking ratios are what inform how, are, help inform how we will change our cash-in-lieu-of-parking. So we start with our established parking ratios. We look at an expanded area and expanded uses that it could be applied to, and we're trying, we, in doing this study, we're looking at this area to understand why developments cannot provide the parking they need to provide. There's site constraints, and we recognize that the current levy of $3,000 per space is not adequate to replenish that long-term parking supply. So as part of this study, we looked at how an expanded and updated cash-in-lieu-of-parking program would work. Developments can use cash-in-lieu for the eligible portion of the parking supply that cannot be constructed on-site. And that determination is based on criteria for the site. It's not that development may opt out of providing parking, but there are criteria, there are five criteria, that are looked at as to whether they would be eligible for cash-in-lieu of parking. In particular, we look at site constraints that limit the ability for the site to provide all of the parking that's required, how the use of the property and the proposed on-site parking supply deficiency is not constituting overdevelopment of the site, but is appropriate development, that there isn't a negative impact on the livability of adjacent residential areas, that the application is consistent with other city planning objectives in the official plan and other policies, and that the municipal parking supply in the area can or is anticipated to be able to accommodate that parking supply deficiency in the foreseeable future. All or a portion of the parking that would be cashed out by the development may not be constructed at the same time. The city would manage that supply within its current public supply and with how supply would be constructed in the future. So, in addition to expanding the area that cash-in-lieu-of-parking would apply to, and in reviewing the criteria under which cash-in-lieu would be considered for a development, cities, the study is also proposing that the fee be raised from the current $3,000 per space to $20,000 per parking space. And we've modeled that fee increase on four main components: the construction cost of physically building that parking space, the value of the land that the parking space or the area that the parking space will be in, the area required for that physical space, and the share factor of the cost of that space borne by the city and borne by the developer. This fee is designed to more accurately reflect the true cost of providing that public parking space, and the formula allows us to regularly review this fee to ensure that it accurately reflects the construction costs and other components of this formula that factor into that fee. So as part of this study, the formula that you see at the top of the slide reflects what the cost of one cash-in-lieu of parking space and how we calculated that $20,000 fee. So it takes into account, as I said, the construction cost, and we use industry standards and reviewed what were the costs for a surface, surface parking space, above-grade and below-grade space. And in looking at the study areas that we're considering expanding the cash-in-lieu program to, it's most likely that the city would need to construct an above-grade parking space. In looking at the land value, we used a 2015 study of land values within Kingston and are using the downtown multi-residential land value as part of that formula. And in considering the area of the parking space, it houses not only the vehicle that it will house, but a portion of the laneways and access is required to have that function as a parking space. The fourth component of the formula is the share factor. So this share factor represents the proportion of the cost of the parking space that would be borne by the developer and the proportion that would be borne by the city. And it reflects that the parking space that's provided by cash-in-lieu is a very different parking space than what is provided within a developer's development. Specifically, that space is part of the public supply, and they're not allocated typically to specific users. The space would likely not be as conveniently located to a specific development. It would be developed as part of a larger public supply in an area close to the development. And as it's part of the public supply, the developer would not have any ownership interest in the public parking and would not have any control over the fees that are charged or the way that the lot or the space is operated. The share factor also recognizes that the city is able to recover some of those costs over the longer term through user fees such as permits or meters. So as part of this study, it was proposed that the share factor then be set at 30%. So using those values from the previous slide, a construction cost of $30,000 per space, land value of $1,238 per square meter, an area of 29 square meters and a share factor of 30%, this provides us with our $20,000 per space fee. The $20,000 fee, the study recognizes that that is quite an increase over the existing $3,000 fee. And as such, the study is looking at a way that that fee could be phased in over a period of time, currently four years. So moving initially to $5,000 per space in the first year and upwards to the final $20,000 per space in year four. That's designed to help move, to help the city move to a formula-based approach to cash-in-lieu of parking and provide the development community time to transition to this new policy. It also reflects that this fee, this $20,000 fee, is a formula-based fee and would need to be reviewed at regular intervals to ensure that all of those costs that constitute the fee are reviewed to reflect the current value. So those are the components of the study that we are looking at. We're reviewing the recommendations and receiving input from a variety of public consultation sessions, both at Planning Committee and here at council. Depending on the input that we receive, there may be additional consultation with the public upcoming, followed by recommendations to Planning Committee about how the parking ratios could be amended and what the cash-in-lieu-of-parking structure and program would look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Neal.
Yes. You mentioned the whole idea of the two areas. Is there any possibility that, or an intent, that money generated in one specific area will go towards serving that specific area? I ask that because I know payment in lieu of parkland sometimes generates money from one area that isn't necessarily spent in that area. So, my question is, will there be an attempt when there's a development in Williamsville to try to direct that, those monies within that specific area?
Ms. Vendetti.
Thank you, through you, worship. With respect to that, the cash-in-lieu would be taken and applied to the area to which the bylaw applies to, so it would be the entire area within the Williamsville and downtown and harbor. However, if you actually look at where we're seeing some of the larger-scale redevelopment that's requesting relief with respect to parking ratios, we're seeing more of that demand and pressure within the Williamsville area. So, given that we have the study that identifies the shortfall within that area and that that's where we're seeing some of the larger-scale redevelopment happening, it's likely that it would result in that area being targeted.
Thank you. And just a quick comment. I know when you presented this at planning, we had an opportunity to ask some questions regarding the plan as well. And, as I said at that time, I have some real issues with this really modest phase-in portion of this. We are gifting to developers.
Counselor Neal, is there a question?
Yes, there is. We are gifting to developers when we are charging them $5,000, 7.5% of what a parking space costs. So, would there be a possibility, as I understand it, when this comes to council, to move, to move an amendment to eliminate the phase-in?
Ms. Vendetti.
Thank you. At this point, as per the next steps, we're taking in all of the input that we've received, so we heard your comments, and we're looking at best practices and options. We can address that specifically in the comprehensive report that we bring forward with respect to the phase-in and its council that's the ultimate approval authority as it relates to the bylaw itself.
Yeah, I'll be doing that at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counselor Cannon.
Thank you, through you. Just giving a hypothetical situation, if you had 100 units in a building and they were all one-bedrooms, compared to 10 units in a building and each unit had 10 bedrooms, you'd have the same amount of bedrooms, but, or same amount of doors, or, sorry, very, same amount of beds, but very different amount of doors. How are we going to look at that? Because what if a developer came in and said, "Okay, it's 20,000 per unit. I'm going to put 10-bedroom units in." Obviously, that's an exaggeration, but on a grand scale, it's significant dollars between one versus the other. How would we approach that?
Ms. Vendetti.
Thank you, through you, worship. We're actually looking at that. We've heard those comments loud and clear through the consultation process. We recognize that we don't want to be incenting larger units because those aren't necessarily the units that we want, the five-bedroom apartment units that cause more challenges than a one- or two-bedroom. At the same time, we're currently processing some applications that have recently been submitted requesting a per-bedroom parking ratio, which is something that we heard about loud and clear through the public consultations. So, we're looking into that further right now, looking at how the other municipalities are dealing with that and what a reasonable per-bedroom parking ratio might be. So that'll be a component we bring back with our comprehensive report.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Mr. Semple, for your presentation. I'm trying to wrap my head around the future effect of this change, and as I see it, there's three main sort of different points of view, depending on who you are and what this effect would have. So, there's the developer himself or herself, there's the public, right, that uses the parking, and then there's us that set policy, or more specifically, the transit strategy and the parking strategy that are kind of intertwined. So, right now, it's 3,000 per space in cap, for cash-in-lieu. In other words, if you build the parking instead, you save that 3,000. That's going to increase quite a bit, by over 600% to 20,000. So that sounds like an incentive to get the developers to build more parking than they're currently building, rather than giving cash-in-lieu, because it'll be more economical for them to build it as part of their plans than to, when it, as it gets, you know, closer to the true value of it, than it would be to just give the cash-in-lieu when it's at a discount like it is at 3,000, right? So that's from the developer's point of view. Is that correct? It's going to incentivize the developer to create more parking?
Mr. Semple.
Through you, Mr. Worship. Yes, that's one intent of what the program is looking at, certainly setting a more appropriate fee for the cost of construction of a space. But in addition to that, the current cash-in-lieu-of-parking program is quite restrictive in what it allow, in what development it can apply to. So, the majority of the development applications that are received today that are seeking some measure of parking relief are not eligible under the current cash-in-lieu-of-parking bylaw to even cash out any of those spaces. So it's twofold, in that it's designed to best reflect the cost of that space that needs to be created at some point in some place, but it also is looking at addressing some of the issues that exist with development applications as they're coming in now and the tools that are available to them.
So, in the case where they do, they are eligible for the cash-in-lieu, it'll be much more expensive, and that money would be, from our point of view, a lot easier to use for new construction of parking. Both of those, that element and the incentivizing, the incorporating it into their design, are going to create a higher capacity for parking, which is part of this strategy. However, we also have this transit parking strategy where, which you also spoke to in the report and in your briefing, about setting the upper limit of and not oversupplying parking, which would be counterproductive to our goals on transit and overall use of the downtown land. So, is that just a fine balance? Is that, we're trying to fine-tune it to get it to where we get the best advantage on both sides of the equation? Is that what this is?
Ms. Vendetti.
Thank you, through you, worship. In looking at best practices from other municipalities and some of the challenges that we've run into with some developments, there's not very many where we see oversupply of parking, but we do have OP policies that speak to not oversupplying parking to the detriment of active transportation or transit use. So, we want to make sure that we don't have sites that are doing that strictly for renting it out or for other purposes, so we want to make sure that we're meeting the goals and objectives of the official plan. And in terms of moving forward with an up-to-date cash-in-lieu-of-parking policy, we need up-to-date parking ratios to base that on. So we recognize that in order to advance the update to the cash-in-lieu-of-parking bylaw, if we didn't have up-to-date current industry parking ratios, that there would be a shortfall or a disconnect with the two policy frameworks.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to highlight the danger of, although you say that it's rare that it happens at the oversupply, I believe we're kind of in, we're almost, we're very close to that line right now because we're having trouble getting people to switch to transit. So, or at least as fast as we want them to, which is a different part of our evening tonight. So, I would say, to use an extreme example like Counselor Cannon just did, and I think it was him that told me the story, parking in downtown San Francisco is $100 a night at a hotel, which is much higher than it is here, San Francisco, of course. So in an extreme urban environment, you get, the forces to use public transit are much stronger than what we currently see in Kingston. So currently, on the continuum, I mean, there's a huge difference between where we are now and where we could be if we actually required the true cost of parking to be borne by the user, which we're not even close to. So, that's where I'm sort of...
So, question, Devin?
Well, I'm asking the wisdom, I guess, of increasing the parking supply at the same time where transportation is moving in the other direction, basically.
So, I think in addition to Ms. Vendetti's comments just around an appropriate parking ratio for a development, there is also a balance in the public parking supply that needs to be available to a neighborhood or an area. And if there, through cash, through the cash-in-lieu component of these program changes, there is, there is an opportunity, as the city would own and operate that parking, to set appropriate parking policies and appropriate parking pricing that moves the city closer to its transportation, its larger transportation goals, whereas we do not have that ability with private parking spaces that are contained within a development. So there's a measure of the spaces that could be provided through cash-in-lieu that would foster and sort of encourage a more shared parking and shared public parking component to the overall supply.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing up that shared aspect.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, worship. And through you. I may have missed this in your presentation, but can cash-in-lieu be used for maintenance of facilities that already exist? Or must it be used for construction of a new facility in terms of parking supply?
Through you, Mr. Worship. The intent of the cash-in-lieu contribution is that it's to fund the, it's to fund the creation of new supply. The way in which that supply is created, there are a variety of ways in which the city can create public parking. We can build new structures, we can build new lots, we can also partner with others in order to do that. As it, as the study recommends right now, the funds from that would go into the city's Parking Reserve Fund, which funds all parking activities, the creation of new spaces, but also the maintenance and operation of others.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, I'm wondering if there's an intention to expand this program along some of our nodes and corridors or areas that we're anticipating either redevelopment or intensification beyond, we know that there's pressure already in Williamsville and downtown, which is why we need to move quickly here. Are we planning to expand that outside those two neighborhoods in terms of, again, trying to have transit-supportive developments along the corridors that have these express buses or transit-intensive uses?
Thank you, through you, worship. We're undertaking a comprehensive review of the official plan right now, and it's been recognized that we need to do the nodes and corridor study to look at further intensification in those areas of the city. So I think, once we arrive at an official plan policy framework that's more detailed with respect to the nodes and corridors, then we can actually look at whether or not that's something we need to explore with respect to expanding the cash-in-lieu-of-parking framework. So first, we need to establish the official plan policies, then we need to look at our zoning framework for those areas, and then we can actually look at what the vision for development is along those nodes and corridors and determine what we need to do in terms of reaching that supply.
Counselor Hutchison, did I see your hand?
Yeah. Thank you, your worship. Could we go back to the slide that shows construction costs there, please? So, when I look at these, and I'm not, this is not criticism, I'm just wondering, it seems to me that this, the construction costs do not reflect the kind of costs that we've been cited for the cost of parking spaces, either on-surface or in parking garages. And maybe that's to make it more platable, okay, and, you know, to developers or whoever. And I'm not entirely against that, and, but I would like to understand what the reasoning is behind coming up with $40,000 per parking space, which is, in some estimates, like good $20,000 less than what we've been cited.
Through you, Mr. Worship. So, before the share factor is applied, the cost of this space is approximately $66,000, $67,000 per space. What that cost, and the report speaks to, that cost does not include other features or components that may be desired as part of a development, features to, features to address heritage or design considerations. This cost, this construction cost reflects the creation of a standard structured parking space. So some of those additional costs above that pertaining to additional features, parking operation equipment, or design components required to fit into heritage or other design guidelines are not necessarily contained in this construction cost.
Clearly, you think it's adequate, or at least a place to start, because you covered yourself off at the end there saying we had to go with current costs, but this is what you factored out, or, no, I shouldn't use factor because there's a share factor up there. This is what you've calculated, and it will do the job for the time being as far as the goals of the plan. And I take that the goals, as was mentioned over here, this is my, sort of mixing my second and third question, okay? One is to induce developers to put more parking on-site so we don't have to supply it, and neighborhoods are less impacted. That's correct. I see naught. and neighborhoods are less impacted. That's correct, I see naught. And the other, I would take it, is so that the transit system can be enhanced and we can actually make the city function better in terms of congestion and moving people around and adapting to intensification, so that the transit plan we have in front of us and this parking plan are really joined at the hip. Would be that an accurate way of describing it? And that's why they're appearing together?
Through you, Mr. Worship. The parking supply that is being provided through a cash-in-lue program is, is designed to support what the development is expected to provide, but cannot provide on-site. The other components to your, to your question pertaining to how that supports the city's broader transportation plans and transit plans, certainly with that resulting supply being within the, within the city's control, there are ways in which that supply can be used more efficiently to support those goals.
Thank you.
Counselor Ossanik?
Thank you, your worship. I just wondered with the public consultations, if you've heard from tenants and how they feel about having any amount of off-site parking, you know, as part of a development provided off-site. And I'm just thinking of young families, you know, like, it's hard to have your car even half a block away. And so, sort of like how Counselor Stroud was saying, we want to, we want to get our fair share of what the true parking cost is, but we still would want to encourage developers to provide as much parking on-site instead of cash-in-lue. And then, also with what Counselor Neal was saying, we want to try to get to the true cost of that cash-in-lue parking as quickly as possible. So, I'm just wondering if any, you know, tenants have communicated with you and how they feel about off-site parking?
Thank you through your worship. We did two public consultation sessions. They were advertised through social media as well as in the newspaper. We didn't get any tenants out to those. We did get some homeowners from the local residential areas who were voicing some concerns about on-street parking. But with respect to off-site parking, the official plan does allow for off-site parking for residential uses regardless of cash-in-lue of parking. So, with that distance to be regulated through the zoning bylaw. Typically, we look for that to be a shorter distance if possible, if it's the private developer supplying off-site parking. But with respect to cash-in-lue, and as it will relate to potential off-site parking, we didn't hear any concerns about that. We did hear the developers indicating that, I mean, they would like it as close and convenient as possible, but that's not the framework that it's necessarily going to work within, that it's going to have to go where there's supply available. So, we didn't get that direct response. What we heard the most loud and clear was that they didn't want the neighborhood streets impacted with on-street parking necessarily related to offsetting a developer's obligations through their own proposals, as well as, sorry, I just drew a blank. Oh, and parking per bedroom is something that they wanted to look at in terms of intensity of use.
Any other questions? Counselor Neal?
Just very quickly, two quick questions. Clearly, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, all future operational costs for this parking will be borne by the city. Is that accurate to say?
Yes, this, this reflects the cost, the capital construction cost of a space. The, with DB intention that the ongoing operation and maintenance costs associated with that would be part of the fees associated with the space.
Somebody I spoke to today had a couple of concerns. One was for those people who might be physically challenged, will still be demanding the same level of handicap parking on-site, accessible parking on-site. Is that an accurate statement?
The proposed cash-in-lue parking bylaw doesn't get into that level of detail. However, in reviewing applications for development that have been through the department, we always try to encourage that the barrier-free parking be provided on-site so that people that need access to those spaces have them readily available to them where they live, so that there isn't an off-site distance challenge with that.
And the person I was speaking to also brought up something that Counselor Ossanik just mentioned, which is for some people who may not qualify for a handicap parking space may indeed still be challenged if the, if they have to go a block and a half, two blocks to the parking area that, that is being designated. Have, has there been consideration for, for that on-site as well? I'm thinking of elderly people or so, who may not qualify for a handicap parking space, but still would be, it would be a challenge to go a block and a half, two blocks?
Through your worship, the policy that we're looking at doesn't get to that level of detail. However, through site plan and looking at a lot of these properties, what we are keeping in mind is that there has to be the availability for some type of off-street pickup and drop-off, so that if there are some people with some mobility challenges and they may have off-site parking locations, there might be potential for somebody else to park their vehicle for them and bring it back so that they can drop them off. We recognize that in some cases, off-site parking isn't ideal. If you go do a large grocery shopping and you're not going to walk four or five blocks with your groceries, but there's, there's ways to make some of that work. The other thing that we're looking at encouraging on a number of the higher-density sites we're seeing is car shares, so that someone that may not have a vehicle can use a car share to go do some of those types of trips, rather than having to take the bus necessarily with all of their groceries. Or, we're looking at those details in terms of the functional operation through site plan control. A lot of that comes down to the building operator.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our second information report, we'll begin with a briefing from Laura McCormick, project manager, Planning Division, who will provide a briefing with respect to information report number sixteen dash two eighty-seven, Community Benefits under Section thirty-seven of the Planning Act, City Initiated Official Plan Amendment and Guidelines.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. My name's Laura McCormick. I'm a project manager in the Planning Division. I'm here to speak with you about community benefits under Section thirty-seven of the Planning Act. As I'm sure all of you are aware, Section thirty-seven of the Planning Act allows municipalities to authorize increases in height and/or density of a proposed development in exchange for the provision of facilities, services, or other matters if the development is being requested under Section thirty-four of the Planning Act. So, basically, zoning bylaw amendment application. In order to do so, a municipality must have an official plan in effect that allows the use of Section thirty-seven for this exact purpose. Section thirty-seven allows a municipality to require the enter, the owner to enter into one or more agreements to secure the community benefits, and they may be registered on title. Bill seventy-three, which Secretary will be speaking to later today, has added a number of additional provisions. They're, they're mostly accounting provisions just to increase the transparency of the process. So, what the funds can be invested in, where the, where the money goes towards, and, and releasing public statements on a yearly basis that, that just increases the transparency. So, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten speak to that in Section thirty-seven. So, basically, the fundamental concept of community benefits under Section thirty-seven is additional height and/or density beyond what's permitted as of right in a zoning bylaw in exchange for community benefits. So, facilities, services, or other matters that are meant to offset the increases in that additional height and density. In preparing for this presentation and for the, the guidelines and the proposed City Initiated Official Plan Amendment, we, we looked to the Ontario Municipal Board case law. Obviously, other cities in Ontario have a lot more experience in the Section thirty-seven realm, so we wanted to look at the best practices to ensure that our guidelines and our official plan amendment is in line and, and fair for the public and developers and city staff and counselors and everyone involved in the process. So, the Ontario Municipal Board has consistently said that the use of Section thirty-seven must be grounded in fair, clear, transparent, predictable, specific requirements that are set out in the official plan and not arbitrary in their application. An applicant should know what will be expected by way of Section thirty-seven benefits and increases in heights, height and density are approved. So, in approaching this project, we've really tried to establish a set of guidelines that meet this underlying criteria to ensure that the process is fair, clear, transparent, and predictable. Just because it is a complicated process and, and sometimes there are allegations that it's not. So, that's what we're seeking to do with the project that we're working on. So, right now, the enforced official plan has Section thirty-seven policies. The main policies are nine-five-two-five to nine-five-three-zero. It's also touched on in the major open space environmental area, the affordable housing, the heritage resource, and city hall policies. Going through our first draft of the guidelines, we decided that we should establish governing principles. I think the first and foremost principle that we're working with for community benefits is that a project must be good planning on its own merits. We aren't including community benefits to make a bad project good, but to make a good project better. So, good planning is fundamental and paramount in the process. The community benefits will be secured in a site-specific zoning bylaw and potentially a legal agreement. When we're going through the process, we should, city staff should select from the list of benefits that are actually articulated in the official plan. An applicant may volunteer other benefits, but that would have to go through a strict review process. The benefits can be provided on-site or off-site, and they may be provided in-kind, so you can actually provide the physical benefit itself, or cash-in-lue, so you could pay money towards that benefit. And the value of the benefit is to be assessed on a case-by-case basis. And obviously, one of the key fundamental components is community consultation needs to be included as part of the statutory public consultation process. The guidelines speak to a qualifying threshold. So, right now, the first draft of the guidelines include any kind of application for a zoning bylaw amendment that has a residential component, that has a gross floor area exceeding three thousand square meters. So, if they're requesting an increase in applicable height or density limits, they may be subject to community benefits. The guidelines establish a requirement to provide a link between the actual development proposal itself and the community benefit. So, there should be a direct connection between the specific characteristics of the subject property or the development site and what you're actually providing as a benefit to the community. The appropriate benefits are really just a select list from the existing official plan and our proposed official plan amendment. So, as we're going through the City Initiated Official Plan Amendment process, this will be a large component of the public consultation piece, is really figuring out what we think are appropriate community benefits to be asking for through the process. Sorry. The guidelines speak to location, so the benefit can be provided on the site itself or off-site. And if it's located off-site, we really want to ensure that the concept of a catchment area for that benefit is having a positive impact of the immediate area surrounding the site. So, there's an immediate area that are actually experiencing the increase in height and/or density, and we want to ensure that they actually benefit from the community benefits that are being provided. The, one of the most difficult pieces of the guidelines is determining the appraisal component. So, actually establishing on a case-by-case basis, getting, receiving an appraisal to determine uplift value. So, what we consider to be an uplift value is comparing the value of the land based on the as-of-right zoning permissions and comparing that against the value of the land if the proposed development were constructed. And you take the difference between those two numbers to, to figure out the uplift value. In, in a lot of cases in the existing zoning bylaws, there is no maximum density that's being provided. So, there's a height limit and there's a building envelope. So, we're, we're trying to work in that regard that if we don't have that density, in order to calculate in a fair way in the appraisal, we've really received a lot of feedback that a gross floor area is the only equitable way to compare a project and, and determine the value. So, actually looking at, here's the established height limit and what's the gross floor area above that height limit, and that's what the appraisal should be based on. In comparing the guidelines and approach of other municipalities in Ontario, some municipalities don't actually provide a specific range in order to provide a little bit of guidance and, and be more fair and predictable in this regard. We've decided to put a value of uplift that we're looking for from twenty to thirty percent. So, the community benefit should be equal to twenty to thirty percent of the uplift value. The guidelines provide some implementation components, so they have to be included in the site-specific zoning bylaw, the Section thirty-seven agreement. And then, if you're actually securing it in the Section thirty-seven agreement, it can detail where the funds are allocated and the timing of the payment of those funds. It can be tied to different components of the development, so building permit, or when the bylaw is final and binding, or however you negotiate it through the process. So, the guidelines provide a procedure, so obviously advising the applicant as soon as we start discussions about the proposal to let them know that it may be on the table as part of the discussion in the future, circulating it to commenting departments within the internal city and external commenting departments, consulting with the local community, assessing what the appropriate benefits are with respect to our full set of guidelines, negotiating with the applicant, requesting the appraisal and the cost estimate, assessing the uplift, uplift value against the community benefit, detailing it in any report that goes to council or planning committee recommending approval and securing it in a zoning bylaw and an agreement. So, the next steps with our project, we haven't initiated any of the City Initiated Official Plan Amendment. We're going to be holding a public open house. We'll initiate the actual OPA. We'll go through a full public consultation process, just like any kind of policy document that we're working on. Guidelines don't have a Planning Act requirement for notice, but it'll go through the same requirements as the official plan amendment goes through. Then, a comprehensive reporting, council adoption of the OPA and endorsement of the guidelines is our ultimate goal. That, questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Counselor Neal?
One question is specific to the Williamsville zone. As I understand it, the, the Williamsville plan had a rather modest height recommendation, but dependent on how large a footprint the developer was able to put together and rules about step, stepping back the building, it could go quite a bit higher than the four stories that's mentioned in one portion of, of that. How problematic will it be, given that rather general wording within the bylaw, to be able to calculate a, a community benefit within the Williamsville zoning?
Listen, Eddie?
Thank you through your worship. That's something that isn't that challenging to do. We're going to have to work with the developers in terms of requiring them to do some work with respect to as-of-right gross floor area versus proposed, so that we can review that. But, it, it can be modeled and it can be determined what the additional height and density would be that they're requesting.
Thank you. That, that's somewhat reassuring. My other question is more general. I think we've had kind of a single-trial conditioning on the whole concept of community benefit with the Innate project. And I've tried to explain to the public the whole concept that we base the zoning application specifically and solely... that we base the zoning application specifically and solely on the merits of the development, but because prior to that, we negotiate this community benefit plan with, with the developer, it appears to many in the public that we're selling density, we're trading height for community benefit. How can we go about, because I, I support the concept of community benefit, but how do we go about on the next project or the projects that follow to, to show that the community benefit isn't a sellout of the development? I know many of us that supported the community benefit voted against the Innate project, so clearly, it can happen, but there's the perception out there.
Ms. Agnew?
Thank you and through your worship. So, I think there's a couple parts to my answer. I think that the first thing is, again, it's building awareness and familiarity with the process. It would have been ideal, when we were going through this process, to already have the guidelines established and have much more of a comprehensive understanding of how we are going to go through the process of community benefits. We already have the section in our official plan, and it does give some direction, but for the community, although there have been some, some previous examples where community benefits were negotiated, but to a much lesser degree on, on projects, this was the first time. So, I think, I think first and foremost, as the community becomes better aware through the public process of consultation on this, how we better get input from them on how they actually want to be consulted, and then how that becomes part of the discussion from the very beginning that a project gets introduced to the community, I think those are, are things that are going to help so that it's better understood from the very beginning. But again, from a planning perspective, I can understand where there could be the perception that, that we're essentially trading one thing for another, but it's, again, that's minimizing the role of the planner in the whole process of evaluating the merits of a proposal before we start to look at whether we would consider a community benefit something that is appropriate or not, or whether or not we would ever get to a place of providing a positive recommendation for a development proposal to planning committee and then to, to council. But I do think that, again, as we get into it, as this council and councils to come have a greater understanding and comfort with community benefits, because it's something that's fairly new to Kingston, and also by extension of that, as the community understands the role, the consultation, that it's part of the discussion from the very beginning or understanding a project, I think that that's going to help to alleviate some of the anxieties that were out there with the first project that we really went through as a, as a council and, and staff.
And as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, one of the things that leads to having to have that firm agreement with the developer prior to the zoning is that under the Planning Act, if the zoning is approved, the developer could easily say, "Well, I'm not sure I really want to do what you're asking of me," and can go and get a building permit at that time. So, is that the rationale for firmly nailing down the community benefit prior to the zoning approvals?
Ms. Agnew?
Thank you and through your worship. I'd say from a cynical point of view, I guess, yes, that, that's always a possibility, but first and foremost, again, in looking at what our role is as planners, and that's making sure that we're compliant with legislation. So, the Planning Act stipulates that the community benefit needs to be implemented by way of the amending zoning bylaw, so therefore, having that discussion left until after you pass the zoning bylaw to, to permit any form of development, you're missing that window that's provided to you in the legislation, and you wouldn't be compliant with the way that the legislation says that you need to implement the process. So, again, it's, it's to really tie it to a regulatory process where there is that statutory public component that is regulated through the act with the giving of notice and, and ensuring that, that you're, you're getting that commitment because it's implemented through the zoning bylaw and it's very specifically regulated at the time the decision is made, so everybody making that decision understands what they're agreeing to and that it's in applicable binding law.
And with a broader, fuller form of, of public consultation, do you see that as potentially a participatory democracy exercise that would allow the public to define that? I think with the Innate project, I may be wrong, but it was more, we could use these benefits for the community, and I don't question the benefits' value, but I'm not sure that it was as community-driven as it could be. Could you comment on that, please?
Thank you and through you. So, as part of going through that project, in the second statutory public meeting, the developer's planner did introduce as part of his briefing to the committee and to the public what they were thinking about, what the developer was thinking about in terms of a proposed community benefit associated with that project. And then as staff, we went through the process of, of setting up the social media accounts and the individual email and, and putting together the, the program where we were reaching out to the community, looking for commentary, ideas, suggestions, feedback on the, the benefits that had been suggested by the developer. I think, again, with the community becoming much more familiar with what this tool provides to us as a municipality under the Planning Act and the range of different things that the municipality can look for as a community benefit, I think that discussion is going to be much more informed on future projects. But again, it's because the way that we have this set up, it's a voluntary program, unless as staff, we have sort of this holster of projects to go to if, if something comes forward where, where a bonusing discussion may be something that we want to engage in, most of the discussion on the benefit is, is initiated by the developer saying, you know, I'd be prepared to, to partner with you on this, or how about this idea, and that's, that's the way that it's gone, because we don't have that list of approved things that we're looking for as a municipality, so it's, it's, in that case, it was the city responding to some ideas that came forward and then trying to look at some of our strategic documents that would align well with some of the options that were provided and whether or not that was something from a staff perspective we thought was good for the municipality and appropriate.
I'm looking forward to, to becoming more community-driven and less developer-driven, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Yes, just in that line, I was just wondering if we could have another look at the uplift value slide?
This one?
I believe so. Just let me just view it for a second. And can you just flip to the next one?
No problem.
Okay, I think your answer has covered what I, my question. Thanks. It was made clear by different answers from the three of you. Thanks.
I just have a, a quick question from the presentation. The 20% to 30% of the uplift value, is that benchmarked against anything in particular, or is that just what we think is the best percentage?
Your worship, it's based on the best practices of other municipalities in Ontario, so Mississauga and Vaughan both provide a, a range of the uplift value that they're looking for. Ottawa provides an exact per-square-meter calculation for different areas of the city, and then a lot of the other municipalities have very general statements that they just negotiate on a case-by-case basis. So, in order to provide that predictable nature, we thought it would be appropriate to include an actual percentage, so everyone can feel comfortable knowing what we're looking for, but, so the 20% to 30% is based on the Mississauga and Vaughan examples that actually provide a range in their guidelines.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. And we will move to our third information report, which will begin with a briefing from Sukriti Agarwal, Senior Planner, Policy Planning, who will provide a briefing with respect to Information Report Number 16-331, Smart Growth for Our Communities Act 2015, Amendments to the Planning Act.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening, members of council. My name is Sukriti Agarwal, and I'm a policy planner with the Planning Division. My presentation today focuses on the key changes to the Planning Act stemming from the Smart Growth for Our Communities Act 2015, which is also known as Bill 73. Just a little bit of background, Bill 73 was introduced in March of 2015 to amend the Planning Act and the Development Charges Act, and this was the result of a formal public review of the Land Use Planning and Appeal System that took place in 2013. Bill 73 received its third reading and royal assent on December 3, 2015, and all changes to the Planning Act and the Development Charges Act are now in full force and effect. The changes to the Planning Act are intended to give residents more say in how their communities grow, set out clearer rules for land use planning, give municipalities more independence in making local decisions, making it easier to resolve disputes, and make Section 37 density bonusing, what we are calling community benefits, and parkland dedication systems more predictable, transparent, and accountable. There have been several changes made to the Planning Act which have a direct impact on the city's development approvals process, and it also has policy implications for the City of Kingston official plan. I will be going over the key changes based on these five broad themes. So, with respect to public engagement, the first change is that all single-tier municipalities in Ontario are required to establish a planning advisory committee, which includes at least one resident who is not a municipal employee or a council member. And a planning advisory committee is not a decision-making committee of council. Its intent is to provide recommendations to council, however, their recommendations are not binding. The primary purpose of establishing a planning advisory committee is to give citizens more say in land use planning in Ontario. We have been reviewing how other municipalities are complying with this requirement. Some municipalities are using existing advisory committees, for example, their heritage committees, or for example, an economic development committee. We are working on the details on this, of this committee, and we will, staff will be bringing forward a report to council for consideration regarding the establishment of a planning advisory committee. The second change is that the Ontario Municipal Board is now required to have regard to public input received by the municipality, even, even when the appeal relates to a non-decision. This was previously not a requirement, so this is something new that has been established through the changes to the Planning Act. Municipalities have now enhanced ability to create alternative notice provisions for development applications. So, for example, I know the City of Ottawa has some alternative notice provisions. They require bilingual notices, and the policy, this provision has to be implemented through OP policy, so if we are looking at alternative notice provisions, we would require the policies in the official plan set out what exactly those alternative notice provisions would be. The next requirement is that decisions for most, actually for all type of development applications are now required to include an effect, and, sorry, an explanation of the effect of public input on the decision, if any. Previously, this was not a requirement. We have changed our comprehensive staff report templates, which now also include the effect of any public input on the staff recommendation, because most of the times, planning committee and council are voting on staff recommendations, so we have modified our comprehensive report templates, as well as all of the notices that are going out now include a statement regarding the, the effect of public input, if any, on decisions. The next change is that official plans are now required to include public consultation policies. The City of Kingston official plan does have some policies with respect to public consultation, and they've been further beefed up in the fifth draft of the official plan update. With respect to certainty and stability, where the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing is the approval authority for official plan or official plan amendments, the requirement is that the draft OP or the draft OPA be submitted to the ministry at least 90 days prior to the notice of a public meeting. In the city's case, this requirement doesn't apply to privately-initiated official plan amendments, because council is the approval authority, however, this requirement does apply to official plan, the, the City of Kingston official plan or, or an update to the City of Kingston official plan. The current update that we are undertaking, this policy does not apply because the Planning Act also indicates that if a notice was given within 120 days of July 1, 2016, that's when this provision came into effect, this provision doesn't apply. So, we still fall within those 120 days. As such, we, we don't have to submit the official plan update to the ministry 90 days in advance of the notice of the public meeting. The review timeline for the provincial policy statement has been changed from five years to 10 years, the reason being that most provincial, provincial plans are updated every 10 years, so to streamline the review process and so that all review cycles follow the 10-year timeline, the PPS review cycle has been changed. And similarly, the review cycle for new official plans has also been changed to five years. However, a five-year review cycle continues to apply where an official plan is updated and not replaced in its entirety. So, I just wanted to make clear that this only applies to new official plans. So, for example, if a city repeals and replaces its official plan, then the 10-year cycle applies, otherwise, the five-year cycle continues to apply. The next change is, is a two-year moratorium on privately-initiated applications for official plan amendments, zoning bylaw amendment, and minor variances. So, these apply if, if a municipality adopts a new official plan, no privately-initiated development applications are permitted within two years of the official plan coming into effect. Similarly, when a municipality passes the new zoning bylaw, no new privately-initiated applications are permitted within two years of that zoning bylaw coming into effect. And with respect to minor variances, minor variances are prohibited within two years of a site-specific zoning bylaw coming into effect. So, all of these changes are, have taken place after July 1, 2016. The moratorium on official plan amendments and zoning bylaw amendments do not really apply to us yet because we don't have a brand-new official plan, and also, we don't have our comprehensive zoning bylaw yet. However, these moratoriums can be waived by a resolution of council. So, council can have a resolution which waives these requirements on a site-specific basis or for all applications or for particular types of applications. Build form is now included as a new provincial interest, and inclusion of built environment policies are now required in official plans. The city's official plan already contains several policies with respect to built environment, especially in Section 8 and Section 2. Previously, employment land policies had to be reviewed at the time of an official plan amendment, sorry, official plan update. These are no longer required to be updated at the time of an official plan update, and the change is intended to give municipalities some stability, and if these policies are not opened up at the type, at the time of an update, they won't be, be able to be appealed to the OMB. they won't be able to be appealed to the OMB. With respect to the decision timeline for official plans and official plan amendments, so decisions on these type of applications are required to be made within 180 days of the city receiving a complete application. However, if the city and the applicant agree, this timeline can be extended by up to 90 days. And there is only one extension of a 90-day timeline for decision-making. The primary purpose is to resolve any issues prior to council voting on a proposed official plan amendment. The development permit system has now been renamed as community planning permit system. Previously, these were optional for municipalities. However, now if the province requires a municipality to establish one, or, for example, if the province requires us to establish one, we would have to establish a community planning permit system. The one municipality I know in Ontario that has this type of a system is the town of Gannon, Oakway. And this system combines the minor variance cycle process into a combined process. With respect to applications for official plan amendments that were in progress when these changes came into effect, the previous regulations apply if a complete application for an official plan amendment was received prior to July 1st, 2016. The next change is that there are specific provincially approved matters. For example, boundaries of a vulnerable area identified as part of a study undertaken under the Clean Water Act, or, for example, Greenbelt boundaries, Oak Ridge's Marine boundaries. If an official plan includes any of these provincially approved matters, these are not, no longer subject to an appeal. As well, second unit policies are not subject to an appeal at the time of an official plan update. So any policies that we have, currently have as part of our official plan update will not be subject to an appeal anymore. As well, an entire new official plan is no longer subject to appeal in its entirety. So what that means is that, for example, if someone challenges one section of the official plan, the rest of the policies will come into effect except for that one section. However, this requirement does not apply to official plan updates. So the official plan update that we are currently undertaking is still subject to what we call a global appeal. So that means if we receive an OMB appeal, then entire OP update will be subject to an appeal. The sections that have not been appealed will not come into effect until the OMB appeals have been resolved. If an applicant appeals an official plan amendment because of a non-decision, the city can limit any additional appeals on that official plan amendment and give notice of about 20 days. So what that means is, for example, if we receive an appeal and there may be instances where there are more parties that are, that we think are going to appeal, we can give them a 20-day timeline from the date we receive the first appeal so that this process doesn't keep going on for a long time. For OMB appeals, clearer reasons for appeals are now required with respect to provincial and local policies. So that means with respect to the provincial policy statement and the official plan. The new changes also provide council with the ability to enter into alternative dispute resolution prior to sending the appeal record to the Ontario Municipal Board in case of an appeal. Previously, this requirement or this option was there for municipalities. However, now what it does is that we don't have to send the OMB record to the OMB right within 15 days of the notice. We can wait for alternative dispute resolution and then, which can take up to 60 days. And then, following that process, the appeal record can be forwarded to the OMB. The new changes also give the province the authority to create additional criteria for minor variances in addition to the four tests contained in the Planning Act. These will be identified through regulation. There is no regulation currently in place yet and we don't know if and when these will be in place. And the changes also give municipalities the authority to establish new criteria for minor variances. As Laura had mentioned, the Bill 73 changes have some enhanced reporting requirements for Section 37 and parkland fees. So there are some requirements with respect to annual financial statements that are now required to be made available to the public and also to the minister if requested by the minister. The maximum alternative rate for parkland dedication for cash and lieu of parkland has been changed. This has been done to incentivize the development of parkland as opposed to collecting cash and lieu. And also, before an official plan includes any policies regarding alternative parkland dedication, a parks plan is required to be prepared by a municipality in consultation with school boards and members of the public as appropriate. So in addition to the changes to the Planning Act, there also have been several changes to the Planning Act regulations. I have a few main ones highlighted on this slide. So the first one is now, as part of a complete application, applications for official plan amendments, zoning bylaw amendment, holding symbol removal, draft plan subdivision, are required to submit a public consultation strategy. So at a minimum, public consultation requirements of the Planning Act need to be satisfied. However, applicants can go above and beyond the Planning Act requirements. It's just that they have to now identify that as part of the complete application. We have already modified DASH so that applicants are aware of this requirement and they are filling out any, like if they are proposing any additional public consultation. Notices and signs regarding development applications have been changed. There is now new stipulated wording identifying the regulations that is required to be included on all notices and signs. As well, notices can now be sent by email. So that's another change to notice requirements. OMB record for minor variances is now required to include minutes of a public hearing. This was not a requirement previously. As well as, there are also some transition provisions for matters that were in process at the time of proclamation, which is July 1st, 2016. So, for example, the regulations specify how these policies should be read. For example, if a decision was made, let's say, on June 30th and the appeal period overlaps time before July 1st and after July 1st, how would those be dealt with? So things like that. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counsel Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. A sort of general one. Are timelines, are you expecting timelines to be extended with some of these new provisions? That, say, more public consultation, the new extension of time, the 20 days, in one case, and 60. Or do you expect that the business of the planning department will be able to stay in the same mode that it is now, even with these changes?
Thank you, through you, your worship. The decision timelines in the Planning Act haven't changed. So, for example, official plan amendments are still required to be, a decision is required to be made within 180 days of a receipt of a complete application. And for zoning bylaw amendments, it's still 120 days. And I do agree that these changes do, will affect some of the decision timelines. For example, if a planning advisory committee is involved. However, these changes are so new, we are still, we are monitoring how other municipalities have or are approaching these changes. And you're right, we may, we may see at times that the decision timelines may get extended.
Thank you, and one more. So in a way, there are rules, but they're not rules. So we're going to see how everybody manages with these new regulations. And I remember when I first heard about the mandatory planning advisory committee, someone said to me, "Well, that means one member of the public will be added to our planning committee, but now I think that might be wrong." How do you see this, the mandatory planning advisory committee? Or do we know yet?
Through you, your worship. So the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing had previously indicated that a planning advisory committee cannot be a standing committee of council. So based on that, my understanding is that, for example, we may not be able to add a citizen member to a planning committee. We have consulted with many other municipalities and, like I said, they have used, some of them are using existing advisory committees to fulfill this requirement. I recently, I can't remember the name of the municipality, but they are, they've established a planning advisory committee to only review city-initiated applications, not any privately initiated applications. So it's totally up to each municipality how this requirement will be complied with. And this has to be done through a resolution of council. And it's, we are still so early on in the process that nobody really has the right answers yet.
Counsel Neal.
Yes, I actually have a question for the CAO and the clerk, but not for planning. To the CAO, I know that we've had some really good public meetings with our communications people about establishing a city protocol for public consultation. And I took part in that exercise and it was excellent. My concern is that a number of people have asked me because various departments appear to have kind of a variety of ways of doing public consultation. But I think we've established a very good protocol. Is it possible? When can we expect it to apply to all departments so that we follow that really good plan that's been put in place?
So, Your Honor.
Through you, your worship. Thank you for the question. So right now, that exercise is in public consultation phase. We continue to work on it and we'll be going back for some final information from the public, probably by the end of October. Subsequent to that, we intend to bring a report to council through Administrative Policies Committee on either late December or into the first quarter of 2017. I will indicate to you, though, that there may be, while it'll create a general framework, there may be situations where there may be a requirement to have extra types of consultation just by the very nature of the types of input that we will require for certain things, like parks or parks development and things of that sort. So we're trying to be flexible enough. I don't think it's fair to say it would be a cookie cutter exercise, nor do I think that would be effective in all situations, but it will certainly be a guideline that we can stick to. I would also suggest, however, that the requirements on the Planning Act will also take a bit of a different form than that general guideline because there are specific requirements to meet the Planning Act's legislation.
I look forward to that document coming forward because now we seem sometimes to be doing catch-up public consultation. So we have a decision point that's voted on and then we have a public meeting following that. And that's always somewhat awkward. So if we can do upfront public consultation, I think that would be excellent. My question to the clerk. We've seen some excellent PowerPoint presentations tonight from staff. Is it possible to have those as communications so that they're both available to council and to the public?
Mr. Clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's definitely possible. I can also add that we are live-streaming this evening's meeting, so information is all in the community. We definitely will make that information available.
Great. Thank you very much. And if we can do that more routinely, I know in planning, we sometimes get excellent PowerPoints that go beyond just the report. So if we can routinely include those as formal communications, that would be great. Thank you.
Counsel Hudson.
Thank you, your worship. Through you. I just want to get a bit more clarity on a couple of these things you covered. You certainly covered plenty. And thank you. On the enhanced alternative notice provisions, I guess what I would like is, it's intended to provide municipalities increase ability to tailor public notification requirements. How is it going to be different than what we do now?
So, through you, your worship. So what that does is that, for example, if a municipality wants to create locally tailored requirements for notices, that can be done as an alternative notice. So, for example, I mentioned Ottawa, they have their notices in English and French. So that is something, like it's an alternative notice provision.
Okay, so for us, I take it that's not a whole lot different than we do now?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, the requirement to explain the effect of public input on decisions is interesting. Now, we supply the comments and we respond to them. People don't always like what they get, but they get something. So does this provision going to change how we respond to public consultation? Like, will we have to enhance our explanations? Will we have to be more detailed? Just from this little bit, it's hard to tell. Or are we already feel that we're already making, you know, meeting that provision?
Through you, your worship. We have changed all of our decision templates, which are updated the day after council votes on an application or when the Committee of Adjustment votes on a minor variance or a consent application. And we are including new language in all of the notices which indicate whether or not the bylaw was changed at council or whether or not the conditions of approval were changed at a Committee of Adjustment meeting. So we are already including new language in all of our notices.
So, Ms., sorry, a second.
Sure.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. So definitely, from a planning perspective, every planning report that comes through to planning committee would have a summary in it of public consultation that's received, either through a formal public meeting or sometimes we meet with residents on our own, we receive letters. So there's always a summary of that and a discussion of how staff is able to take that in, whether that resulted in physical modifications to a building or it depends on what the nature is or how we can deal with it at a subsequent stage. For example, if it's subject to site plan control. But the key change here that was made in the Planning Act is really looking at how council takes that information and the impact that has on council's decision. So where we've made some provisions in our templates where staff are really speaking to it a lot more directly and making sure that that is prominent in our report, it's really, a lot of the change has to do with capturing how council can be influenced one way or another in the way they make their decision. way or another in the way they make their decision, and we have to report out on that as part of the notice provisions.
Okay, you can imagine that some of the things that have gone on, well, are always going on, frankly, you know, how that would be reported out. What can you do other than, does that involve like so-and-so said X? So-and-so, you know, I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult here, I'm just trying to figure out how that, like presumably, we have the council minutes and it's reported out. Just not clear how it's going to be reported out, what the effect is on council. Council makes the decisions, people get up and say what they got to say, and then there's a vote, and I rarely think you get the whole story, but from any side of it, okay, just to be clear. But apparently, well, from what you're saying, what it says in this provision, we're going to have to be clearer. And do you have any idea how that would work?
Through you, your worship. The, this change, it doesn't specify how exactly these type of comments will be included in the decision. However, municipalities have been given a choice as to how they want any effect of public input on the decision to be reflected in the decision itself. So for example, if at council, let's just say one provision of a bylaw was changed in response to public comments received, so that would be captured in the decision. And for example, we could say that in response to public comments received regarding this application, the bylaw was passed with modifications by council. So something like that. We are not looking at including names or a lot of details. All we have to do is explain the effect of public input, if any, on the decision. So whether or not there was an effect, no effect, that's all we have to say in the decision.
So the effect or not?
Exactly.
Right?
Yes.
There's public comments, so something has to be said about whether something was modified or whether it was not modified. So that would be considerably different than what we've got now. And I guess my question, my follow-up question would be, will staff be reporting back about how we're going to implement this?
Ms. Agnew.
Yes, and thank you, and through you, your worship. I think, as you've seen tonight from Secree's presentation, the changes to the Planning Act were pretty comprehensive, and there's a lot of things that said required, some things that said optional, but what I can tell you from our standpoint, and a little bit of frustration is, you know, we're handed a piece of legislation, and there's not a lot of guidelines as to what some of the things mean, and what the ministry says when you ask them is, well, it's whatever the municipality wants to do, which is not terribly helpful as we're trying to figure out how to implement new sections of legislation, and everybody in the province is going through it at the same time. So there are some, some matters that certainly we don't have figured out 100% yet. We'll be continuing to work on that over the next few months with the clerk's department specifically and with legal services as well, continuing to monitor and talk to our municipal partners to see what other people are doing from a best practice perspective, and coming back on some of the more complex ones with some recommendations for council's consideration. But certainly, it's, it's not our intention to, in a notice, to get, you know, get into the detail that Council Hutchinson said this and therefore this, and that's not the intention at all, but it, it's more so, I think, to give a presence and a profile to public input in the process of decision-making.
Okay, it's in process, thanks. And, and we're going to hear more about this somewhere along the line. Okay, so the other, another interesting thing is that if there's an amendment to the proposed official plan or even the official plan, which we sometimes get with actual privately-initiated proposals that's discussed here, it says, and I'm looking for clarification, maybe I got this wrong, municipalities should provide a copy to the ministry, or to the minister, I guess, at least 90 days prior to the notice of the public meeting. So that's quite different, it seems to me. And am I reading that correctly? And it says effective streamlined approval process is what the intent is, but that's a whole other step if I, I'm not sure I'm reading it properly, and that's what my question is. Like, if somebody makes a proposal and they think they need, you know, an official plan amendment and maybe a bylaw amendment, that's got to go out to the ministry 90 days before we even call a public meeting. Am I reading that correctly?
Through you, your worship, this provision only applies if the ministry is the approval authority. For privately-initiated official plan amendments, council is the approval authority, so this provision doesn't apply in our case. However, it applies if we were undertaking the preparation of a new official plan, so that's a city-initiated, I mean, I won't call it an application, but a city-initiated official plan, or if we were undertaking an update to the official plan. So for example, our five-year review of the official plan, because in both of these cases, the ministry is the approval authority. So it doesn't apply to privately-initiated applications for official plan amendment.
Okay, thanks.
Council Ossenick.
I found my answer in the report.
Great, thank you. Council Ellen.
Thank you, your worship. With the two-year moratorium piece, I just want to confirm that it is only for, for a brand-new official plan, so our current update process would not create a two-year moratorium, but our comprehensive zoning bylaw process would, according to what I'm reading in the report in here, I just want to confirm that, that's the case.
Through you, your worship, yes, that's correct. So this provision would apply once our new zoning bylaw comes into effect, and the two-year moratorium will apply on all privately-initiated applications for zoning bylaw amendment. I, I just want to indicate, though, that during this two-year moratorium, the city can make city-initiated amendments to the official plan or the zoning bylaw. It's just that privately-initiated applications are prohibited. However, they can be, this moratorium can be waived by resolution of council. So it could be done on a site-specific, on a, sorry, on a case-by-case basis when, if and when we receive an application, or it could be for all applications. So.
Well, I was just going to ask you about that, actually, because I wanted to, I would assume then we would have to waive that rule or the moratorium prior to consideration of the application. Otherwise, it would be exactly the same process. We would have the planning process, and then council would decide whether or not to waive or change the amendment or bylaw. So I just wanted to make sure if we, find out if we had thought that through, because it wasn't clear if that was happening before the process or after the process.
Through you, your worship, so you are correct, we, we will be working on details, further details regarding this requirement. Like I said, the requirement for, with respect to official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment does not yet apply to the city because we don't have a brand-new official plan or new zoning bylaw. However, the moratorium on privately-initiated minor variances is in effect provided that a site-specific zoning bylaw amendment was approved after July 1st, 2016.
Okay, thank you, good memory. The, the other piece that I wanted to ask about was the new provisions for notices and signs, and I'm, I'm wondering if that gives us the ability to have signs that are a little more engaging or provide a bit more visual information or information about where someone can go to get more information about a planning application. So I just happened to be in Burlington a couple of weeks ago, and we saw a sign with a sort of draft floor plan of a proposal and, you know, a web address of where to go, maybe a barcode, or, no one uses QR codes anymore, but a QR code on it or something to help people find more information about that specific thing while they're looking at it. And that's something that I know our signs are, don't currently have. Are we able to look into that now with this, or?
Through you, your worship, yes. We have actually already made revisions to the required signs. We are now including where additional information can be obtained through DASH, for example, and also at the planning division offices on John County Boulevard. The, the one example that you mentioned where they are including, for example, floor plans, I would consider that as an alternative notice. So if we had an official plan policy that would enable us to require something like that on a sign, we could, we could do something like that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Agnew.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. So certainly, we've seen a number of the examples that you're, you've been talking about in terms of the city of Burlington, where they're a lot more visual, they're a lot brighter, ours are very text-driven right now. So certainly, as part of Secree's presentation with respect to additional wording that we had to provide, there's the statutory wording, which is very lengthy, that has to go into a sign, but certainly, there's a lot at our discretion if we want to change the nature of what our signs look like or have additional things required as part of that. The way the signs come together, we're able to modify that requirement for developers, so it's as long as it, we provide them with the wording and the size of it, but in terms of adding a graphic or a visual, those types of things, we do have those choices at our, at our disposal as a municipality to have that as an enhanced requirement.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, so having gone through our information reports, we will return under committee of the whole, and first, I will ask for a motion to resolve into committee of the whole to consider the 2017 to 2021 Kingston Transit Business Plan. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Council Neil, seconded by Council Hutchinson. Please vote. And that carries. So first, I will ask for report number 94 from the CAO.
Moved by Councilor Allen, seconded by Councilor Bohm, that report number 94 from the chief administrative officer recommend be received and adopted.
Okay, so there is just the one clause, but we will begin with a briefing from the CAO and from Sheila Kidd and from Jeremy DeCosta with respect to the 2017 to 2021 Kingston Transit Business Plan.
Thank you, your worship, members of council, members of the public, members of staff that are here. Before I, before I started in the presentation, I just wanted to acknowledge the members of staff that were here. We have transit operators with us tonight, we have finance people, we have legal folks, we have obviously transit and parking folks with us, engineering folks, the commissioners are here, and some of the young folks you saw up here were members of our planning division. And I think those of us that, as we get older and want to see youngsters develop in our organization, we really are surrounded by some incredible talent, and I just wanted to acknowledge that this evening. So tonight is a situation, and I moved into committee of the whole in order to help to narrow down some direction that council has given us. It's effectively two different pieces of direction that we're having some challenge, trying to find a path forward on, quite frankly, and I'll just describe to you what that is. The first direction was that tax increases for your term would not exceed 2.5%. And sometime shortly after that, the council approved a motion that asked us to implement a service plan enhancements for transit that would move us from approximately a 5% modal share split to about a 15% aspirational goal by the year 2034. And of course, that last direction came as a, as a motion around the time when the Kingston Transportation Master Plan was being put forth as a guiding document, and an ambitious goal, I think would be a fair way to say it for council. But if we are going to take direction from that and move to implement that by 2034, we need a substantial investment in transit on an ongoing basis between now and 2034. And a second, I'm going to put the chart up that shows you what that is. So the recommendation before you tonight, and in the committee of the whole format, is, is for us to indicate to you that for the next five years, and the plan is before you, and I'd like to pay tribute to staff for developing this plan in-house without hiring external consultants to assist us, so thank you very much, folks, an excellent plan, is to demonstrate that over that five-year term, there would be approximately 63,000 service hours added to our system, and that cost will, would be a net subsidy of in excess of about $5 million over five years. So just to position ourselves from where we currently are, this is a slide that you'll remember from the last budget presentation where we approved the budget in 2016, and at that time, without any service level changes, we, we showed you that we would have to close a gap of $1.3 million approximately in 2017 in order to achieve a 2.5% tax increase. I checked my email earlier today, and for the last six or eight months, I haven't had any motions from council asking us to get out of certain businesses in order to reduce the costs in any of those particular areas. So I would say to you that that continues to be the challenge as we work through our budget right now. So if we're going to obviously add, if we're going to add to the service costs, then we're going to have to have a funding mechanism. The report reflects a funding mechanism of an additional dedicated tax increase, or we would have to cut costs in some other areas to achieve that. This is what the bottom line of that looks like. It's, we need to find $1.3 million in 2017, and we're on our way to doing that. That would also mean we'd have to find a further $780,000 in 2018 to achieve that target, and a further $1,100,000 in 2019. At, sorry, 20, yes, 2019, at, as of our projections at the end of 2016 for that budget. Now, this slide basically shows the excerpt from the K-TMP, providing the context of what had been recommended at a 9% modal split to the aspirational goal of a 15% modal split. So what you'll see here is a table to get to the 2034 year. Now, in, in the second line, so you can see as the modal split changes, the second line shows the annual operating costs. So the annual operating costs in roughly $20,14 was about 20 million. This plan would take us up to about 31 million, and the total operating costs, and these are all in 2014 or 15, is about 51 million to get to a 15% modal split. Now, that's gross cost. The capital cost to achieve that would be, over that 15-year period, an incremental impact increase of 52 million. That's for majority of buses, shelters, equipment, ABL equipment, and, and storage. Therefore, a total transit cost of 103 million from what we currently have in a range of between 20 and 48. between 20 and 48. Now, rightly so, road infrastructure costs may go down in terms of the reinvestment. However, the net costs, I'm going to show you in a chart, which is the tax subsidy, continues, and you'll see that in a minute. So this shows you that cost in about four-year increments, starting in 2016. The blue line is the gross operating cost, and the red line is the tax, or the yellow line, green line, is the tax subsidy cost over that same period of time. So you can see that it's going up over five years, about $5 million, which equates to about $1 million a year, and that's what your report says. So if you then transpose those numbers back onto the forecast slides for financial purposes, you can see that in order to achieve the same gap that we have, we would need to have a revenue source of $1 million a year. And that is reflected again in this particular slide, and you can see the yellow line that basically says that that would be the dedicated funding source as per the plan that we have. So a couple of options. We want to go through the plan. I'm going to turn it over to the transit folks here and have them go through and explain to you what is being recommended, the changes, the improvements. And quite honestly, folks, we're dealing here with a product of success, quite honestly. I mean, we've had tremendous success in the last iteration of the plan, and we're continuing to build success every day. Sometimes, success costs money. So with that in mind, we'll talk about the plan, and then we'll see how fast you want to move this, whether or not you want to go to 2034 to 15% or something different that gives us perhaps some different guidance to go back and figure out what we can do with the impact in taxes. So unless you have any questions with respect to what I have described as an overview, I'll turn it over to Sheila and company.
Thank you.
Through you, your worship, to save a bit of shuffling, I'll present from here, and then Jeremy's going to have the bulk of this presentation because he's going to walk us through the plan. So we're here tonight to present the Kingston Transit Five-Year Plan 2017 to 2021, and to seek council approval that will allow us to take advantage of a federal funding grant that was recently announced of just under $7 million. That's the good news. We're very excited. Just to give you a very quick summary of that, the federal government recently announced a fund called the Public Transit Infrastructure Fund, and Kingston is eligible to apply for $6.8 million. It's for capital funding, it's got some specific criteria associated with it. It is matching dollars, but the deadline for the application is the 18th of October, so that's another reason why we are here tonight to speak with you about the opportunities. So Gerard gave some of the background in terms of the inputs to the plan and the fact that this plan was developed by staff, and he did acknowledge some of our transit operators, our service planner. A lot of credit goes to Jeremy DeCosta, the transit manager, and I'd like to thank all of my staff for their many hours that they put into this plan. This is a really good plan. I am so proud of the work that they've done. The plan started with public consultation in the spring. We invited Dr. Casello to Kingston. He is a principal researcher for the Waterloo Public Transportation Institute, and he assisted Kingston about six years ago when we were developing our original redevelopment plan. We invited him back this time. He hosted an information session, and he was able to observe the advances that we had made and give us some guidance on where we might want to go for our next five years. We also did a number of customer surveys, talked to our riders, and worked with a bus operator committee so that we had input from the front line, the drivers that are out there every day. This plan is aligned to the official plan, and the update that you heard, a presentation on tonight, continues to reflect transit supportive development, intensification, and high-frequency transit in the main corridors. This plan is also very much aligned to Kingston's strategic plan. To plan a livable city, there is a priority area that specifically identifies that during its term, council will expand and improve upon public transit. This plan also supports the youth employment strategy. It supports the immigration strategy. We have a strategy to create affordable, sustainable, and mixed housing, and this plan supports that. We have a strategy to advance an integrated multimodal and active transportation system, and this plan supports that. To foster intensification in the city core, got it. And last but not least, to revitalize the North End, including mixed residential and commercial investment along Montreal Street. It's in there. Sorry, go ahead. Yeah. Thank you. Gerard talked about the Transportation Master Plan, and this slide shows map seven. We had a lot of discussions about the Transportation Master Plan in 2015, and particularly about the importance of transit to achieve the objectives that council wanted to achieve. This particular slide, we call it map seven, and we spoke a lot about it. This represents the service frequency that Kingston would, according to the plan, that Kingston would have to have in 2034 to achieve a 9% modal split. We rely on this service frequency because whether we're talking about a 15% modal split or a 9% modal split or 11%, the service frequency and intensity is very similar. It's really a matter of how quickly you move to that and implement that level of service with other supporting strategies such as pricing policies, parking policies, and a number of other things that are outlined in the plan that we presented tonight. Last but not least, we were also guided by other council direction with regard to affordable transit. We were given specific direction to provide more affordable transit options for residents living under the low-income cutoff level and for citizens that require financial assistance, particularly youth and families, and we've done that. It's included in this plan. So we are presenting to you a plan that is based on council's direction for service and affordability, and we're also presenting to you a plan that we believe, as your transportation services professionals, is the plan that this city needs to continue to support the investment that we've made and to continue to make advances forward for the transportation system in Kingston. I'm going to hand it over to Jeremy, and he's going to talk to you about the details.
Great, thank you, Sheila. So the plan that's in front of you is a five-phase plan, similar to the last five-year plan. Things are chunked out in pieces and in phases, and that has a lot to do with the capacity of your transit organization and how much we can take on at once, balanced as well against the financial realities. So I'm going to present all five phases to you this evening. Over the five phases, we're going to add 21 additional buses to our service. So that's in addition to our planned replacements under our capital asset fleet management plan. So it's 21 new buses, expanded buses, and I think Gerard may have alluded to this already, about 63,000 new service hours. This plan in scale and scope is much similar to our last five-year plan. In the last five-year plan, we brought 20 buses online and about this many service hours as well. So this plan is very similar in size and scope. So what this plan gets you is the following. We're going to expand service on Sundays and holidays. I'm going to go into the details on these. We're adding new express service to the Montreal Street corridor. We're going to take our very popular 500 Series 501, 502 express routes to seven-and-a-half-minute service from the current 10-minute service during peak weekdays, Monday to Friday. And we're going to take our East End Express route to 10-minute service from the current 15-minute service during peak. And you know, much of this plan does hinge on increases to our express routes and adding express routes, but we are also proposing changes to some neighborhood routes, enhancing service to neighborhood routes, and adding new service to neighborhoods. And those neighborhoods are listed in front of you, so enhanced service to Rito Heights, Strathcona Park, Waterloo Village, and Sutton Mills. And we're going to add new service under this plan to areas without service currently, including Woodhaven, the northern section of Cataroc Way Woods, and Cataroc Way Woods Industrial Park along the Gardners Road corridor, east of Gardners Road. With respect to fares, there is a general fare increase proposed in January of this year, and that was identified in the previous plan, consistent with doing fare increases every three years. So there is a fare increase to cash fares, our multi-ride passes, and our monthly passes. So there is a general fare increase to all fares. However, we are changing some of the age categories in our fare structure. So presently, children six and under ride for free. We're proposing, under our next plan, that children 12 and under would ride for free, and we would run that on a three-year trial period. And the reason we're doing a three-year trial is so that it is aligned to the expiration of the high school program. So we'd like this program to come to a review three years at the same time that the high school program is also due for review. Similarly, the next bullet, we're looking to change the definition of youth under our fare structure. Currently, youth ends at 18, adult starts at 19. And what we're suggesting under our fare proposal is that youth is extended to the age of 24 to make transit more affordable for young adults. And as Ms. Kidd alluded to, this is well-aligned to the youth strategy and the youth employment strategy. Finally, on fares, we are reducing the cost of an affordable transit pass. So while fares generally are increasing the cost of transit for those living under LICO who qualify for the affordable transit pass, the price of transit for them will actually go down under this plan. So Ms. Kidd alluded to, or referenced map seven, so I'm providing it here for you again as a reference, and she's explained why that is kind of our guidepost and what we're looking at. So I'm going to flip back and forth a little bit. So here's what it looks like in 2034 in terms of the service frequency that exists during your afternoon commute on weekdays. And here's where we are presently in 2016. So as I flip back and forth for you, you can see in 2016 versus where we need to be in 2034, there's still some gaps to fill. But I want to show you where we're going to go from 2016 to 2021. So here's where we are in 2016, and here's where we are in 2021. So the dark green line represents a five-minute service, the thin red line, dark red line represents 15-minute service, and in between are frequencies between five and 15-minute service. So you can see in 2016 what it looks like, and in 2021, by the time we deliver the plan, you can see more of the city filled in with higher-frequency service than we have today. So as I mentioned, the plan has five phases. The first phase is to be implemented next September, and this is an improvement to our evening and, sorry, this is an hours of service expansion to our Sunday service and holiday service. So currently, our Sunday and holiday service essentially runs 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Under this proposal, we are recommending that we start service at 6:00 a.m. on Sundays and extend service to 11:30 p.m. on Sundays, consistent with the levels of service we have on weekdays and Saturdays. However, we're not suggesting that we take that hours of service and apply it to all of our routes. What we are suggesting is that we apply that to our backbone of express routes. And when you do that, and you see the shading on the map behind me, that's the type of coverage you get across the urban area of the city by just running the express routes and a couple of local neighborhood routes outside of the express route backbone where walking distances would be prohibitive. So what you have in front of you is adding hours of service on our express routes, Sundays and holidays, and to a couple of neighborhood routes. For holidays, particularly Victoria Day and Canada Day, this addresses concerns, complaints, things identified during the public consultation phase about not being able to access certain civic events that occur on those days. So this helps to address that. Sorry, same new map. So the next piece of the puzzle is Phase Two, and this is contemplated to begin in May 2018, and this is the addition of an express route on Montreal Street. Five years ago, I would have had to take a lot of time to explain what an express route is, and I think everybody now knows what that looks like. So it's blue buses every 15 minutes during peak periods, Monday to Friday, and 30 minutes otherwise evenings, weekends, and holidays. So that would come online in May 2018. At the same time, we're going to improve service to Rito Heights by increasing the number of routes that provide single-seat service. So as part of our analysis for this plan, we looked at where transfers happen in our network, where transfers happen most often, and we try to reduce transfers where we can because a transfer introduces potentially reliability issues. So we're changing, I don't want to get into too many of the details, but we're going to change Routes Seven, Route 16 so that they provide single-seat service to Rito Heights instead of requiring a transfer, as is now the case at the Coche Canada Transfer Point. So we're going to remove transfers from the system and provide single-seat continuous service into the Rito Heights community. The other piece of Phase Two is in Kingston East. And what's going to happen here is we're going to increase our 600 Series Express to 10-minute service during the weekday peak period from the current 15-minute service frequency. And there's a couple of reasons we're doing this. One is we are seeing growth in the 600 Series on the east side, and we anticipate that by the time we get to Phase Two in May 2018, we will be approaching during peak periods buses that are reaching full seating capacity. So right now, during the morning and afternoon commute, buses are at about half-seated capacity on that express route. Over the last 12 months, we've seen that grow by between 25 and 35%, and we anticipate that that will continue. And so we want to position ourselves so that we're ready for that additional ridership on the east side, and we're not left trying to figure out how to manage it. Because in many ways, we had not contemplated what would happen with the 500 Series in the West End over the last five years, and in many ways, it feels like we are scrambling a little bit to manage the capacity that's happening in the West End. And so we want to be proactive in terms of what we're seeing in growth in the East End and ensure that we're putting service in place before we reach a point of capacity. The other thing that's going to happen here on the east side is the current Route 12, which is a local route, which services a portion of Grenadier Village, that's actually going to be removed. And by removing that service, we reduce our service by one bus, and we're going to put that service on the 600 Series Express routes. So we're going to go down a bus, but we're going to just switch it and flip it and put it onto the express service. Okay, Phase Three. Phase Three primarily is about enhancing our 500 Series Express and bringing it from 10-minute service to 7.5-minute service during the peak periods. Again, this is about, it's about two things. It's about addressing capacity, capacity issues on the current 10-minute service. We introduced our 10-minute service in September 2016, this month, and the bus operators will confirm for you that we already have full buses right to the doors, and there have been times where we are already turning passengers away in the morning and afternoon peak period. And if those operators that are here are on one of those routes, they will confirm that it is very full and that we're starting to already leave passengers behind. So as I said before, we're scrambling a bit, figuring out how to manage that demand, and we're putting service hours and more buses into the plan to bring that service down to 7.5 minutes and add more capacity. This is also, and it's also about bringing the service to a level where we can This is also, and it's also about bringing the service to a level where we can attract more new riders. So at fifteen minutes, you think about the schedule a bit, right? At ten minutes, you might refer to the schedule from time to time. At seven-and-a-half minutes, you don't think about the schedule anymore. You go out to the street and you wait for your bus. And so to attract that next group of riders, particularly those riders in single occupancy vehicles in the PM peak, this is one of the ways that we're going to attract that next group, by taking the service to seven-and-a-half. We've seen it, we've already seen it when we went from fifteen to ten, and when we go to ten to seven-and-a-half, it's another group of commuters we're going to be able to bring onto the service. I should have prefaced my comments with this. Phases one through three, as it was with our last plan, our last five-year plan, are clearer. The needs are more immediate, the needs are more known. As we get into Phases Four and Five, the needs are a little fuzzier. And what we, what we saw with our last plan is that there was a bit of a checkpoint about halfway through that plan where we came back to committee and council and said, we need to veer in maybe a slightly different direction based upon what we're seeing. We anticipate that will be the case with, with this plan potentially as well, where we're coming back at a checkpoint around this time in about 2019, 2020, where we're saying, but this is what we thought we were going to do, and maybe it is still what we're going to do, but we may need a check-in to do something different. So I want to just preface my next comments with that. In Phase Four, which is September 2020, we take the Montreal Street Express service we introduced in May 2018, and we extend it further west. So now we're introducing single-seat service, Montreal Street corridor, through the hospital, to the new hospital, to St. Lawrence College, which is a really important single-seat connection that we're able to do when we add more service hours and more buses. In Phases Three or Four, and somewhere in here, subject to how we prioritize these things, we're going to add, we're going to improve service to the communities I've highlighted here and I mentioned in my opening, and we're going to add new service to communities in the west end of Kingston that currently do not have any level of service. In the final phase of the plan, we connect across the top of the city in east-west connections, so we take our existing 700 Series Express and close the loop, and add fifteen-minute peak service on John Counter Boulevard, thirty-minute service off-peak, which supplements our Route Seven, our existing Route Seven service very nicely. So I want to bring you back to, back to where I began with the frequency map and looks, what it looks like in 2021. And by the time we get to twenty, and when we get to 2021, a lot of those gaps that had appeared in 2016 are now filled, and we have a very high frequency of service on the Princess Street corridor during your peak periods. We are down to, or up to, about a bus every five minutes on the Princess Street corridor, as well as along segments of Baggett, Baggett Street out to the waterfront. Besides the, the frequency of buses, besides what we're going to charge people, there are other things that matter in terms of the passenger experience. So in this, in this plan, there's a couple of, a couple, there are some things we're going to do to help improve the passenger experience. One thing I want to highlight is the Cataroclay Center Transfer Point. Anyone who's been to them all lately has probably noted that the transfer point is nearing completion, our new transfer point, with its eight dedicated bays and new lighting and shelters to come. So just wanted to highlight that for, for council this evening. In the plan, we also have earmarked capital dollars to improve the downtown transfer point. So Mr. Semple was here earlier this year to update you on the environmental assessment process that had been undertaken. We're now going to be entering the design phase and being prepared to design and construct a new facility downtown within the life of this plan. We currently operate several park-and-ride facilities, and I just want to talk about a couple of them, because there are a couple of things of note here. The first one being Center Seventy, so Center Seventy is our municipal arena facility at Front Road and Days Road, as I'm sure everyone knows. During the day, when the facility is not otherwise being used, we use the parking lot there as a park-and-ride facility. That park-and-ride, that, that facility has about a hundred parking spaces. And those parking spaces are full during the day with commuters. And so as part of this plan, we'll, we will be exploring opportunities to add additional park-and-ride spaces at other facilities in Kingston West. The plan does not include capital dollars to build parking spaces for transit. It includes a very small dollar amount that would enhance pathways and enhance signage, but we will be looking for opportunities to partner, as we have at the Kingston Gospel Temple, which I'm going to speak about in a moment. So the Kingston Gospel Temple, of course, it's a facility on Princess Street near Sidnum Road, primarily used on Sundays and evenings, and otherwise, like Center Seventy, the parking lot is unused during the day. So we have a wonderful partnership with that community facility to use a portion of their parking lot under a land use agreement. Very minimal cost to the city. We do, we do pay some of the winter control costs, but otherwise, there's no cost to us to access seventy to ninety parking spaces. We do counts there regularly, and we have about fifty cars that are using that on a daily basis, and that number continues to grow. It's that type of partnership that we would hope to seek elsewhere in Kingston West, where we could add parking, park-and-ride facilities, but not add any capital costs, maybe some small operating costs, but not capital. And we certainly heard through the consultation phase that there is a desire to have, have more of that happen. The, the other park-and-ride facility I want to draw to your attention is the facility on outer Montreal Street at Highway 401. So that facility, we built in partnership with the MTO. Until now, it has not really served the needs of transit users particularly, particularly well, because there's not been a high order service there. With the introduction of express routes on Montreal Street in May, the express route in May 2018, that park-and-ride now becomes an anchor for that route. And we do anticipate, much like we've seen at Center Seventy, that the uptake will be quite brisk, and probably, within a couple of years after 2018, we need to be looking at other solutions in the Montreal Street corridor for park-and-ride facilities. Again, no money earmarked, no significant funds earmarked in the, in the transit plan for that. We're going to be looking for hopefully other opportunities. With respect to bus shelters, we have about eight-hundred-and-fifty bus stops in our transit system. We have two-hundred-and-thirteen shelters for those eight-hundred-and-fifty bus stops. That's about twenty-five percent coverage, and that is seventy more bus shelters than we had five years ago. Twenty-five percent coverage by transit standards in other, other communities is absolutely excellent, and we should be very proud of what we've done to build on-street infrastructure. One in four shelters being, one in four stops being covered by a shelter is, is really good. I do want to let council know that as part of our capital asset planning, we look at the age and condition of our shelters, and we've identified thirty-two right now that we would consider to be in poor condition, and the plan includes funds to replace those thirty-two. The plan includes funds to install shelters along the new express route segments I showed you. But there will be, there is, there is very little funding available to add additional shelters beyond that. So we're very focused on capital replacement of shelters that are in poor condition and adding shelters to the express routes. The plan, the, the plan identifies some elements of technology, and I want to just highlight two of them here for you, two things that we think are really important to enhancing the passenger experience and attracting more passengers to transit. The first is introducing real-time bus arrival and bus prediction. So this is technology that tells you when the bus will arrive at your bus stop, real-time. It'll actually tell you when it's going to arrive. So we already have capital funds identified for this. We have, there is a vendor that has now been selected, and we're actually piloting this technology on five buses in the fleet currently. We anticipate that by about this time next year, we will have the technology, the technology will certainly be deployed on every bus, and we would expect by this time next year to be able to turn that on for the public, so everybody can see where their buses are in real time. So the screenshot I'm showing you up there is actually our, our routes. The numbers there, the minutes, the countdown minutes are the scheduled time. A year from now, we'll be able to actually show you the predicted time. The other really important technology piece in this five-year plan is our fare box system. Our current fare box system, the way in which people pay their fares, is not, is not current, right? It, it doesn't reflect the way in which, the way in which people now expect to be able to pay for services. It doesn't allow you to pay with any e-wallets. It doesn't allow you to play with your Apple Pay, Google Pay, that stuff. It doesn't allow you to do any of that, and it doesn't look like this vendor is going to be able to provide that option to us. But we know, if we're going to attract new riders, allowing them to pay in other ways that they pay for their coffee, their donuts, and so on, is really important. And so we need to look at changing out our fare box system in the next five years to allow that to happen. The other thing, and this is noted in the, in the business plan, the transaction time that it takes a rider to interact with our fare box is, is not efficient. It takes a long time for somebody to transact with the fare box, and any time it takes a passenger time, seconds, to interact, it means the bus is delayed, it means the bus is not moving. We are seeing delays at locations where we have large passenger volumes. Kingston General Hospital and Queen's University is our prime example of that. So in the afternoon commute, essentially, every bus that pulls up to that stop loads up and is a full-seated load when it leaves, and usually with standing room. So that's about fifty people or more on that bus. The fare box takes about three seconds to transact each one of those riders. So if you do the math, and I won't, we sit there for a, a number of minutes loading passengers. That's very inefficient, and improved fare box helps with that. We're also, we're also, we've also been in discussion about moving perhaps to a proof-of-payment system at certain locations, so that you could board without using your pass and showing your pass and allow you to get on the bus uninterrupted, to decrease the amount of time that it takes passengers to board. That's not ideal, because we lose a lot of really rich data that is collected at the I'm going to turn it back over to Sheila unless Mr. Mary want to have questions now on this piece, or take them at the end?
Ms. Kidd, how, how many more minutes for, for summary? Just looking at our time.
Probably.
Go ahead.
Through you, your worship, thank you. So what are we asking you to do tonight? We are asking you to approve this business plan. CEO Hunt spoke about the total costs. Over the course of the full five years, the operating costs will increase approximately seven million dollars. It's not quite that much, but it's close. We are asking you to approve the capital budget to support the 2017 and 2018 service changes, as well as the, the bus purchases only from the 2019 capital budget, so that we can maximize the funding opportunity for federal funding at six-point-eight million dollars. I'll skip this, because CEO Hunt has already sort of gone on the, over the capital. We are asking you to specifically improve the service enhancements for Phase One and Phase Two. So as Mr. DeCosta summarized, the expanded hours for Sunday's holidays, the Montreal Street Express introduction, increased service frequency for Kingston East, and the approved fare strategies that are built into this plan. And last, but certainly not least, and we do not take this lightly, we are asking you to approve an incremental tax increase of a half a percent to fund the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are in committee of the whole, so because we have that flexibility, what I would propose is that we first do a round of questions only, so we'll open up the Florida questions from council. Counselor Neal?
Thank you. I'm, I'm, first of all, I'm going to apologize, because I flew in on a red eye last night, so I'm functioning with about three hour, and a half hour sleep. So if I babble, I apologize. I, I sent a couple of questions earlier in the day. How many total passes are now in circulation, both the Transpass and all other forms of, of passes? I appreciate that St. Lawrence and Queen's AMS student cards are a different, a different creature, but if you could explain how many and how that reflects in growth over the last while?
Through you, your worship. We currently have about nineteen-hundred monthly adult pass holders, and our, our Transpass or employer pass, we have over a thousand.
Thank you very much. And that, with the Transpass, I understand, is an increase from 2011 of one-hundred-and-eighty-nine to currently over a thousand. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Pretty impressive, thank you. What is our daily ridership through, say, tomorrow, what would we expect as the daily ridership, roughly?
The daily ridership is now approaching twenty-five thousand trips, twenty-five thousand boardings every weekday. We did set a new record, and I'm going to look at staff, Tuesday, September something. We set a new one-day record, aside from the HIP Day, of course, but we set a new one-day record. What we're seeing this September versus last September is we are moving about two-thousand more people every weekday than we did a year ago.
Thank you. And increases over time, I know I've spoken to you in the past about this. As I understand it, the average public transit increase in the province is very low, one, a single-digit. The last two years and anticipated this year is low double-digit in Kingston. Is that accurate?
Red is on. Yes, both of those things are correct. The, the national trend, the provincial trend for transit ridership growth is small, single-digit. Many transits, if you're reading the headlines, are struggling with any ridership growth at all. In Kingston, that is not the case. We are seeing consistently double-digit growth or very high single-digit growth. Staff reviewed where we think we will be for our ridership projections in 2016. We do anticipate breaking five million trips this year. We weren't sure if we would, so we were four-point-six million trips last year. We anticipate being just over five million trips this year, so that would, I think, represent, I think, between eight and ten percent growth year over year.
Thank you. As I understand it, our busiest non-express route, correct me if I'm wrong, is probably the Montreal Street route. I know in the past, that was always a very busy route. And originally, the North-South Express route had been planned to be Montreal Street, but indeed, it was shifted over for, I know Queen's preferred it on Division, the businesses preferred it on Division. But is that an accurate statement? Is Montreal Street was to be the North-South Express and continues to have very high ridership? Is that accurate?
Yes, I think that's, that's all accurate. Montreal Street was identified in our original five-year plan, because the, the transit network is, the transit design is based upon origin and destination. So when the analysis was done, looking at origin and destination pairs, it made sense for a route on Montreal Street and express route to exist there. However, there then, what really pushed us to Division Street in the last plan was the development that occurred at Division Street and 401, that had us rethink that. And you know, I mentioned having to come back for a revisit midway through the plan. That was the example where we came back and revisited that. Montreal Street during the, the morning
Montreal Street during the morning commute and afternoon commute, that Route One is very, very busy. I wouldn't say it is probably the busiest non-express route in our system, because we would have other routes in the Union Street corridor. This bus does serve Union Street, but other buses in the Union Street corridor that likely do have a higher passenger volume. But Route One, again, I kind of nod to the operators to support what our fare box tells us, but Route One, northbound and southbound during peak periods, can reach capacity. They're nodding in agreement.
Thank you. And finally, the transfer hub enhancements. I guess my only concern is, how will the timing, particularly for downtown, be? Right now, being a daily rider on the 400 or the 500s, I know that it's sometimes a tight squeeze if, with the buses going, particularly on Brock, but also on other streets as well. Will we be able to have that enhancement in time, particularly for the seven and a half, but for the expanded service?
Through you, your worship. We're working on that.
A work in progress.
Allow me to supplement the director's response, to say, there are funds identified in the five-year plan, and so the intent would be to certainly have that completed within the five years. The completion of the environmental assessment and the design work, the preliminary design work that was included with that is going to allow us to move that ahead in the next five years. Is it aligned to the seven and a half-minute service? The timing is probably about right. If you think about where we need to be in 2019, that seems quite reasonable.
Thank you. And thank you for an excellent report, and always promptly answering any questions that council poses to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. And through you to staff, also my thanks for this report, for this plan. This, my question is to do with the Public Transit Infrastructure Fund, which is a wonderful opportunity by the looks of it. If, I'm just looking for staff perhaps to comment on the phases and the capital investments that would come from that fund. And if, at this point, I mean, I know the operating costs are of course tied in with all of that, but what opportunities exist to enhance service in the various phases with this fund that would be independent, let's say, standalone kind of investments that didn't, wouldn't necessarily be integral to the, like, I guess my point is, the $7 million spread out over the five years is not exactly what I'm looking for. I'm looking for where those investments might be targeted, based on the kind of requirements of that, the nature of that fund.
So let me explain the PTIF funding first, and how the program looks, and then, I think that helps with the explanation of where some of the dollars line up. So the Public Transit Infrastructure Fund identifies $6.8 million for Kingston. We must submit an application for that funding by October 18th, as Ms. Kidd said. You only get one opportunity to apply, and you have to put all of your projects in at that one opportunity. So that's the first thing council needs to be aware of. The second thing you need to know is that, as much as the program allows for quite a bit of flexibility in terms of how it would be applied to various projects, 75% of the $6.8 million must be, the projects to which it applies must be completed, done, finished by March 2018. We're being told by the administrators of the program that that's a very rigid date. So for a construction project, for example, you are done open and operating by that date. The remaining 25% of the $6.8 can be extended to March 2019 if there are circumstances that kind of warrant it, and we're of the opinion that that is the case in terms of the way the business plan has been presented. So the program itself is $6.8 million, but there's some very rigid timing in terms of the projects and their completion dates that has to line up. So the way in which we intend to apply for those funds to maximize them is shown on the slide now in front of you. Maybe not, the slide in front of me. Is there a way to get that back up? We're working on it, I think. Perfect. So of the capital projects identified in, what's identified as phases one, two, and three, yes, there is a lot more dollars than what we would need to qualify for the $6.8, but it's about dollars that we are confident we can spend by that March 2018 deadline. And therefore, to maximize the opportunity available to us, we are recommending that we bring the 2019 buses, to bring them forward now, so they can form part of our submission, so that we can maximize the $6.8 million. If we don't bring those buses forward now, if we don't bring that capital expenditure forward now, we do not have enough, we don't have enough other capital to maximize the fund. So depending on what council decides tonight, we would still likely proceed with a full application for $6.8 million for what's shown in front of you for the buses. However, if council opted not to proceed with those buses at a future date, we would simply not receive the funding. And therefore, we would, and therefore, because it's been our one-time application, we would not receive that funding, and we would not maximize the opportunity.
Thank you. So just to clarify that last point, so you would not receive, we would not receive any of the funding?
No, I'm sorry. We would receive the portions of our application that were completed by the timeline. So no, it's not all or nothing, but yeah, sorry. And it's matching dollars. So we need to match $6.8 with $6.8, with projects that match those funding timeline requirements. And when we look at our total capital budget, currently what's in works in progress, what's coming in the future years, we need to move forward some of the 2019 expenditure on buses to maximize that opportunity. If we don't, we'll still qualify for matching funds for other projects we submit, but not the full $6.8. So a supplemental question we might get is about, well, what about that downtown transfer point? Couldn't you move that through? Our concern is with the timing and the completion, and being able to take that through design and construction and do an opening by either March 2018 or March 2019. We aren't confident we would get that done.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you. Actually, just to follow up on some of Counselor Holland's questions, in terms of this matching funding, is it possible that this matching funding, some of it or percentage of that could come from another source besides a municipality? I'm thinking about provincial funding primarily. Are we already in receipt of provincial funding? And is that already part of this plan?
Thank you for the question. So we, thanks very much. We receive about $2 million per year in provincial gas tax funding, and that funding is based upon the municipality's population and our ridership. So it's about $2 million a year. Yes, that has been factored into the plan, and I'm going to look at finance. Yes, that could be stacked as part of our, not stacking, I'm using the wrong word, but we can fund projects with multiple funding sources, including federal funds and provincial funds together on any particular project under this grant program.
Great, thank you. And then, I guess then the challenge would be about stacking. So there's a second round of federal funding to be announced sometime in the next six months, that may have a different model in terms of distribution or equity. We haven't factored that in, because it doesn't exist yet. Am I right?
That's correct. We've not factored in the second round of public transit infrastructure funding. That's to be released, details hopefully later this year or early next year.
Okay, great. Okay, so I just wanted to get my sense around that, because I really like the plan, but I'm nervous about some of the funding approaches that we're going to take, especially from a municipal level. But I'm going to just kind of move to the rural area, which is served about the same in this plan as it is in the previous plan. And I know that there are challenges there. In, on page 43 in the plan, we taught, you referenced the Kingston Transportation Master Plan, and talk about carpooling and provision of a basic level of transit service over the horizon forecast. I'm not sure what that leads to, but we haven't really identified any opportunities to provide that basic level of transit service yet in our plans here. I'm wondering if you have any comments on how we might do that, if we need to partner or develop a different kind of convention of transit that serves our whole municipality, rather than just the urban area?
Couple of thoughts on that. It is very likely that in the rural area, we would not provide the same type of conventional service you see in the urban area. It is very likely that we would be looking at partnership opportunities, other ways to deliver a service that's different than what you see in the urban area. We're not sure what that looks like. We don't know what that costs, and you're quite right, counselor, none of that has been contemplated in this five-year plan. The business plan does identify, however, that we would undertake a study of service in the rural area in this five-year horizon as an input into the next five-year plan, and that's on page 44. So I would acknowledge that, I agree, there's nothing in this plan. The focus is very much on the urban area and supported that 15% modal split. We're not sure how we would deliver service in the rural area. It is likely a different model than we do in the urban area, and we need to know more about the best way to do that. And so the plan identifies conducting a needs assessment to feed into the next five-year plan.
I think that's it for now.
Counselor Go.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, just a couple of questions here. So the first one would be, essentially what I saw up there in the one slide, was that the express route frequency was going to increase on the 601, 602, but there'd actually be a reduction of Route 12. So overall, you're increasing the frequency of the most traveled route, but you're actually reducing the accessibility of transit overall for a portion of, it looks like that's CFP Kingston there. Or?
Yeah. Yeah. So to clarify the change to Route 12, so Route 12 will continue to serve CFP Kingston, but not points north of CFP Kingston. So right now, it travels up Highway 15 and does a loop around Gore Road and back down. That would be eliminated, reduced, and that bus would then be put on the 600s to increase the level of frequency, increase the frequency of service on the 600 service. So same capital asset, but just painting it blue and doing something different with it. If you give me a moment, I do have a note about this. The reason this caught our attention is because we've seen a sharp decline on the Route 12 north of CFP Kingston since we implemented the 600 series in May, last May. I just want to give you the numbers on that.
This kind of follows up with Counselor Allen's comment as well. I get quite a few emails about expanding that even further out, and I think it's, I'm in a district where it's half-urban and kind of the rest rural, so it's that same idea where that would fall under the modeling that you're looking at, as well as what's the delivery going to look like for the rural area in the future?
Absolutely. So it would be the same case in answering that question. With respect to Route 12, let me tell you about Route 12 north of CFP Kingston, what's happened. Ridership there has dropped by 90%. We're now carrying less than 20 passengers per day on Route 12 north of CFP Kingston. That's about one passenger per hour, because they have shifted to the express route. Why? Because it's more frequent, it's more reliable, it's more direct, it has shelters with amenities, and the walking distance is not significant from the current Route 12 line.
Okay, thank you. I have, sorry, one more question there. So I just kind of have some concerns, I guess, about the overall model. And I know we had an aspirational goal of 15%, but just kind of looking at the cost to get there, and with some previous slides, at 5% we're roughly $20 million. At 15% by 2034, I believe it was, we're up to around $100 million. So in stretching to attain that 15%, at what point do we hit the law of diminishing returns, where we're now spending more money to try to attract the riders? And what model is there to kind of say, you know, essentially, we could have a bus every two minutes, but some people, based on their lifestyle or based on other commitments, are never going to have the ability to take the bus? So I mean, I guess at what point do you say, you know, 15% is great, but we're stuck at 12? You know, it's kind of like with our, I guess another example would be, you know, our waste diversion. You know, you can have a stretch goal. At what point do you say, this is it? This is where, you know, we kind of, we have to come up with something different, because just putting more money or more buses or more frequencies of service in is not going to entice people to make that life change, or they can't make that life change?
I suppose the model in its purest form says you can get to 15%, but the KTEMPE also did, of course, acknowledge that it gets harder and harder and more expensive to get that. I don't have a dollar value for it, I don't have a direct answer for you, but certainly getting the last, those last riders, in any service, really, getting those last customers, getting that last person to do the waste diversion thing, it gets harder and harder and harder. Basic marketing models tell us that. There's the early adopters, and then there's others, and it's going to get harder, and it's going to take more investment to attract riders as we get further on. Don't have a scientific answer I can give you, but your theory is accurate. It's going to get harder. And the aspirational goal, as noted in the plan, of getting to 15,000 trips, so 10,000 more trips by 2034, that's going to take significant effort and targeted investment, targeted marketing to try and get that. It will not, it will not be easy. As your transit staff, we will tell you, it will not be easy to do. It's very aspirational.
Just one kind of, sort of, in addition to that. It has to do sort of with the park and rides, which I think are a great idea, but ultimately, somebody still has to have a car to get there. So I mean, we're kind of reducing the number of vehicles going downtown, which in a sense, are we competing against ourselves? So now that person's going to park in a lot for free, rather than drive downtown, they're going to take the bus. So instead of paying a downtown parking fee, they're now parking for free at a park and ride. So are we kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul with that model?
Through you, your worship. The cost of a parking space in, outside of the main density area is significantly lower, and often a surface lot, in our case, always a surface lot, as compared to the cost of a parking space that we would have to provide in the downtown. Land values alone will speak to that. So one of the challenges always with parking is that parking structures or surface lots are not the best use of land in your downtown core.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Not to put you on the spot, just for my information, relative to, say, five years ago, how much more do we invest in transit on an annual basis now than five years ago, roughly? Even just a ballpark?
Okay, so in 2011, your worship, the municipal contribution to transit, 2011, was just over eight million dollars.
And so 2016 would be?
We are at thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fourteen million, fourteen point two, I'm being told.
So say an extra six million dollars per year?
That's right.
Okay. So the high-level description of the plan is capital, twenty-one new buses, and operating sixty-three thousand more service hours, roughly speaking. Is it fair to say that the transit levy, so the additional five percent property tax, is mainly to cover the operating, increase in operating expenses rather than the capital expenditure? To what degree is that true? Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, through you, your worship. So that incremental increase will cover both operating and capital, so it does two things. It's covering off the incremental operating expenses of the enhanced service levels, and it's also increasing our transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund to cover off not only the existing, the capital that's going to be needed directly for the enhanced services, but also the replacements of them down the road.
So regarding the federal funding, which just applies to the capital, if we were concerned about the transit levy increase, and we wanted to consider a slower implementation path on the operating side, could we still invest in the capital now in order to maximize the available federal funding of the six point eight million dollars?
I guess everybody's looking at me. This funding opportunity gives us an opportunity to buy something fifty cents on the dollar. It doesn't fit well within our capital asset plan that we would buy buses that are scheduled to be replaced in 2019 any earlier than maybe we would have planned to otherwise, but at fifty cents on the dollar, we would likely bring those forward and purchase those buses if that was council's direction to us. We would do, we would do something with them. We would either put them in service and use them as additional fleet. We may park them for a period of time, we may put them out of service, we may leave them in reserve. But in conversation that we have had about maximizing that opportunity, it still does make sense at fifty cents on the dollar to purchase some buses a little earlier than we might have otherwise done under our capital replacement plan.
Thank you. And then I guess a final question, more of a financial one, but if council wanted to abide by the two point five percent tax increase, but understood that moving forward, there could be an increase in assessment growth, we have a number of developments that are in the pipeline that are right now being held up at the O M B, for example. So if we wanted to allow for a ramp-up once our revenues increase, is there ability to incorporate that into a transit plan, so that if there was an increase in revenue, then we could direct that to then ramp up transit at that point? CEO Hunt?
So what you're describing is a method of phasing the implementation costs over a longer period of time, even though you may be making some expenditures in a shorter term, you'd be, you'd be phasing, and we have done that in the past with the use of working fund reserves or some other components as part of overarching budget strategies when we've been in a situation where we've had to enhance service but didn't have the funding in place. You mentioned incremental assessment growth, and we've had a good track record of assessment growth in and around the one percent level, which has been, which has been part of the solution for the first six million dollars in the last transit plan. The challenge at the moment is that our building starts are down, and a number of the development applications that are going to create tax revenue and tax growth are at various stages within the O M B, which is delaying construction, which is, which is leaving our construction permit revenues under, under some pressure, as well as the timeframe to get those to a occupancy point is being delayed for a number of years. So there's definitely an analysis that could be done to do some forward projections and payback funds that had been advanced in order to support this, this type of a program. I think based on what we see on the horizon for some of this growth, provided it, it does actually move to building permanent and occupancy stage, is that we could be getting back to a one percent annual amount, which right now, our forecasts are showing three-quarters of one percent, and that amounts to about a half a million dollars a year incrementally, which incidentally would be very close to the requirement from an operating perspective for this five-year plan.
Okay, so I think I will stop my questions for now. Thank you. Next on my list is Councillor Turner.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. So if we increase our development, we will recoup in taxes what we could possibly save in the point five increase going to the new transit plan. So we should build more, is what I hear over there in the corner. But anyway, so I'm going to take it back somewhere else, and I'm going to ask about the airport. When I looked at the map here, it said increased service to the airport, but then when I looked at page forty-one, it didn't show any lines to the airport, and that would be a concern if we're going to go forward with this possible new transit plan.
Through you, your worship, you're right, councillor, there is no service added under this plan to the airport. So we looked at the nature of some of the businesses at the airport, the current service levels, discussed that with the airport manager, and in terms of some of the other priorities we see in the next five years, as we've outlined here, providing service to the airport at this time in that five years isn't recommended at this time. There is an acknowledgement in the, in the plan, though, much like the service you run to the train station, when we introduce service to the airport at a time when passenger volume exists there, we would probably run it in a bit of a specialized way, matching the arrival and departure times of, of the airlines. But under this plan, there is nothing recommended for the airport.
I have another question, what about the new Providence Care? Will you have a bus stop within the new Providence Care in the new plan?
Through you, your worship, again, and we're batting a thousand here with you, councillor Turner, but no, we, we do not have a solution for taking the service into Providence Care. And it's, it's a number of times we've discussed it, and we will continue to explore it, but at this particular time, we have no solution, and it's simply to do with the timings and the, and the distance to the front door of the hospital.
CEO Hunt?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, and I'd just like to supplement the answer that Mr. DeCosta gave on the airport. So while this plan does not have, does not contemplate additional transit service to the airport, certainly from a transportation perspective, there will need to be some discussion about how we can accommodate passengers from the airlines as increased traffic occurs there, with probably a supplemental shuttle service or something of that sort in order to make that, or close a gap that currently exists in the system right now. And that's something that we will continue to work on, we're getting feedback right now in terms of some of the users and potential users of the airport. So I wanted to raise that because it is not in the plan, but it doesn't mean it won't be part of a service that can be offered in a different way.
I really hope we see some service to the airport coming up in the near future. I also have another question about Centre Seventy, am I allowed? The bus stops in front of Centre Seventy, and I was wondering if there could be any future plans to bring the bus into Centre Seventy, so it wouldn't slow down the traffic and cause a lot of congestion there? Is that any, is there any consideration for that?
There isn't any consideration to take it off of Front Road or Days Road at this time. It would introduce some delay, having to circuit through the parking lot. There's also some hazard because of the way that that parking lot is designed to try and bring a forty-foot bus into that parking lot, there is some risk associated with that. So at this time, we're going to continue to maintain the service on, at the existing infrastructure on Days Road.
Okay, I just thought I'd mention that, that's a concern of my citizens, it's a concern of my constituents. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Just first, I'd like to say how fabulous this was to read, and the, the fare recommendations, I think, are just incredible for children, extending the age for youth and the, the reduction in the low income. I mean, they're, I'm sure this must be cutting-edge in Ontario, it's just fabulous. And I do want to sort of wrap my head around, again, the point five percent and timing, the idea of the point five percent tax increase and the fifteen percent modal share and timing, and how they're interrelated, because as you know, we're getting quite a lot of pushback about the point five percent. And I think in general, my sense is, we all want everything we can get in transit without having to do the point five percent if it means a little longer time or some adjustments. So I'm basically asking you to help me figure out what you need to help us to get what we need with a fabulous plan.
That's a great question, councillor. CEO Hunt? You've been nominated to answer that question.
Through, through you, your worship, so, you know, it's really a great synopsis. I mean, that's why we're here to have this discussion tonight, because, you know, there's no question that there's a lot of work gone into the plan, it's, 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 it's a plan, as Ms. Kidd indicated, like it just hits on seven or eight of your strategic priorities. And the challenge, and I said it and nobody picked it up as a joke, but, you know, I didn't see any, any motions recommending us to get out any services over the last eight months. And you'll remember, when we did the strategic plan, I challenged you to help us to achieve your service objectives and your enhancements to build quality of life in a vibrant city by also helping us to make the tough decisions around what services we could make some adjustments in. And, and I recognize that's a difficult situation to be in, but it's also a difficult situation for staff to be in as well. I think you have given us credit in the past for every year coming in with efficiencies with, in a strategic format that allows us to consolidate operations, to reorganize departments, to take advantage of attrition, to, but, but sometimes those are only one-time costs that lead us, or one-time savings that actually lead us on the path to something else. So I think that there are some creative things to do with assessment growth and things of that sort, but, but at the same time, I think it is important that staff bring to council the implications of service adjustments, so that people, the public and council and others realize that there isn't fat in the organizations to the extent that you can continue to wring it out and wring it out and wring it out in order to get to where we need to get to. So I don't really have the answer, but I think all staff are here tonight to listen to this discussion, to hear how important these things are to you, and to give us some advice so that we can take that into consideration as we continue with our budget development, so that we can bring back something that's palatable for you.
Thank you. I think, yeah. Anyway, well, no, I'm going to keep, keep listening, we'll get another round. Thanks.
Okay, next on my list is Councillor Hutchinson.
Thank you, your worship, through you. Just to clarify a couple of things, it says here the point five percent increase is 2017 and eighteen. Is it just those two years? I mean, I know once we've raised it, it will be incorporated in our revenues, but...
So based, excuse me, Mr. Mayor...
I just wanted to be absolutely clear...
Based on our long-term modeling, the investment that you saw in the graph that we put up there would suggest that you need to invest close to a million dollars a year every year incrementally to enhance your transit service on that path towards that aspirational goal of fifteen percent. And so whether it's seven hundred thousand a year or a million dollars a year, it's not, it's not taking it up one year and then you're at the point, it's taking it up every year in that fashion. And that's why growth, assessment growth, definitely is one of the components of the solution, because you do get assessment growth every year based on your, your, the development and investing that's happening in the city. So that definitely is a solution. We've, unfortunately, in the, in the next couple of years, we think assessment growth is going to be constricted a bit because of the, the circumstances that we find from a timing perspective in the city.
Okay. Okay, I'll just leave that for a moment. Is it possible to pull up the CEO's presentation? I just wanted to have a look at the, the relationship of capital expenditures to road construction.
So is one of the first slides in the presentation?
Yeah, it's number, the second one, I think, maybe.
That, that slide there, right?
Right. Okay, so if I understand correctly, the amount spent on transit cost is rising incrementally up to a hundred and three, while the road infrastructure cost savings are, expenditures are going down, these are on two thousand and fourteen dollars, of course. And so the difference, if we're taking the difference between the two, does that mean that at fifteen percent, we have to take in the increases, just let me figure this out, eighty-three million, and it comes down by seventy-three million, or seventy-four million, so that the difference is nine million, and that's what we got to find, and to stay at the constant, constant needs over what we've got there?
Yeah, it's, it's difficult to interpret it to that level. So what this is basically saying to us is, as we continue our investment into road infrastructure, remember, we were building our way out of a backlog of, of investment, and at the same time, we were trying to also build new investment, which a portion is funded by development, through development charges. We're building the right types of road infrastructure in order to move the traffic from a transportation demand management perspective and solution. And as we get, as we grow that investment and replace that infrastructure and get out of the backlog, then our investment in the longer term, over the, over the longer period, twenty-plus years, is going to start, should, it should, if we spend... 20-plus years, is gonna start, should, it should, if we spend the right money. It should start going the other way, recognizing that the modal split will also change the requirement for some traffic. Now, the thing, when the plans were originally created, that we didn't have to take into consideration was sidewalks and pathways on the edges of the roads and cycling lanes. So we've added all of that aspect of our business into our roads envelope, if you will. So, so these numbers are somewhat theoretical when you get into this, this level here. But to bring it back to the current situation over the next five years and how we would look at trying to determine a financing strategy, if we were slowing down to some degree, not saying major degree, but we would, we would be trying to look at some of the, some of the dollars that currently goes into the roads program, if you will, or some other capital work that could be redirected into transit to help with some of that, as Desiree indicated, the portion of capital that, that is included in that $1 million. But essentially, we're gonna be left with an operating subsidy of 700,000 or 800,000. May not be a million, but it's gonna be something, because we have 21 new buses to run, which means we're gonna have 30 operators, more fuel, right? Those sorts of things. So you can't fund those things by capital, by capital funding, simply by policy and by a proper, proper financing strategy. So that's really the piece of, of component. Now, if we could guarantee that no other service costs were gonna go up as a result of growth, or, so for instance, you know, Mr. Keach in Public Works were, was gonna say, listen, I'm gonna restrict Public Works from any additional growth, and I'm gonna always be able to plow snow based on the current budget plus inflation. And if we could say to the police, you know, you can only get inflation and a few other departments, then we'd be in a position where we could package enough money together in order to put it into this and stay within the envelope. So I'm just giving you the theoretical example of how we would go about looking at a budget analysis. And right now, we're in that situation, because within the next four weeks, we're gonna have a budget that we had to present to you with, I'm gonna say, a palatable tax increase.
Right, so what I was trying to get at, and you did address it, at least in part, is the cost to the city over time. So we have to 2034, so we have like an 18-year window to absorb, in a sense, we have an 18-year window to absorb the overall capital costs of, that are implied in this, this plan, right?
Well, these are...
And it comes to $9 million. If we get to say, like, I'm not, I know they're not strict numbers, but in, in general.
So these are the pure investment capital dollars.
Right.
As opposed to the replacement costs. So the replacement costs are not in here. So the, once you buy a bus, you know, within 10 to 12 years, you're gonna basically either refurbish it or replace it, right? So those are the pieces that are built into the model where we're recommending the 1% increase over time that are not necessarily reflected in this slide. This is a slide that's extracted out of the investment side of the Transportation Masterplan.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to see, get a handle on, you know, whether this, you know, what the overall cost really is to the city and whether it looks like it's affordable or not. And so of the 0.5, oh, incidentally, to a really crude question, of the 0.5, does that mean our standard, um, our, like, we fixed on 2.5 for the last five, six years? Four years? Okay, four years. And if we add the 0.5, does that mean that we would be raising taxes by 3% into the foreseeable future? Because it keeps talking about 2017, 18, and I didn't know why it didn't carry on. So that's the part I didn't understand, and I still didn't understand after you answered.
So the answer would be, based on this recommendation, at this point in time, that's what we would be recommending. Instead of 2.5% tax increase for 2017 and 2018, it would be a 3% tax increase.
And what about 19, 20, 21?
So if, if, if the direction then for the next council was to a tax increase of X, whatever that was, and let's assume it was 2.5% based on the principles that inflation is roughly at, at 1.5 to 2, and we still need to invest in our overall capital program of 1%. So let's say it's 2.5. Then unless we got assessment growth higher than what we estimate, now, if the assessment growth went up, we could do it with less than 1.5% tax increase in those years for the foreseeable future. If we don't get that, then you would have, you'd already be into the program, you couldn't back away and say, we're gonna discontinue these buses. So we're adding a million dollars to our overall costs, therefore, the money would have to come from somewhere, and a tax increase would be the place to get it, because fares are not going up enough to pay for the incremental service cost.
So of the 0.5, what do you, I don't know if this is, what percent, what percentage of the 0.5 is related to capital amortization, basically, of the capital cost? And, and how much is it operating?
So we're estimating that, I don't know, it's approximately 70, 30, or 75, 25. 25% capital, 75% operating.
Right. So, anyway, you can sort of tell where I'm going. I'm not arriving at any answers. I just wanna get a better idea of, like, following the mayor and Councillor Shell and trying to figure out
Right.
how we can ameliorate the damage, right? And maybe answer some questions that are out there. So what I was trying to figure out is just how much it was costing us in capital terms and whether there are alternatives to that. You talked about assessment growth and all that, that's all really good. So, but you would have to do more analysis to figure that out. Personally, I would support that, just so we have a better idea where we're at. And so that's the nature of my questions. I have, otherwise, I think the, the plan is a really good one, but we're not at comments, so I'll, and I probably have other questions, but I haven't quite formulated them yet. I'm just trying to expand the ground on which we consider the plan. And I probably would like some more time to think about it and get more staff input. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think we're right into the subject now, so I'm gonna go right to my questions, but just a quick preface. Thank you, Mr. DeCosta, for an excellent presentation. Mr. CEO, you mentioned at the very beginning that you stayed in-house for this, and I think that the advantage to that is not only the savings of not having a consultant, is the local knowledge that Mr. DeCosta and the rest of the transportation team brings to this file. I mean, we're talking a level of detail and knowledge of your city and knowledge of trends, trying to guess the future. I don't think we could have done this with an external consultant, so my compliments. Now, back to the question at hand about the $1 million a year that's been identified roughly, ballpark, with roughly 25% capital, which means 75% operating, which we will need to fund year after year. That's essentially a new operating cost, 750,000, ballpark, 75% of a million, right? Or around 700,000 or whatever it is. It seems to me that there's two options for us as a council. We either increase the tax rate, as has been suggested in this report with the recommendation, or the other option would be to find that equivalent savings across the board at budget time. Is there any way we could look at that option?
So Hunt?
Yes, and, and I would suggest that it's not, it's not a one-year exercise, it's a multi-year exercise, because the decisions have to be compound in order to find the solution. And depending on the direction you give us tonight, we would be prepared to, to bring information to you after tonight to help to determine that particular answer, either as part of the budgets or even before that.
Thank you. So there's an aspect of this which will come up at budget and, and hopefully to resolve this conundrum, we can, we can look at that. Thank you for that. Also, I might suggest a hybrid solution where we, we slow down our aspirational striving to the 15% to save money and still wanting to get, maximize the 6.8 million in federal funding, but, but maybe not, you know, find ways to sort of reduce the ask to bridge the gap even further, so that the ask is not 700,000 for operating, but maybe, you know, 500,000 or something like that. So maybe there's a hybrid solution there. And I'm wondering about another aspect, maybe along those lines, if you, there's a, there's a file or a sort of a slide from your presentation, I believe. It was the one that contained the moving of the 2019 requirement forward a year. It had sort of had the line around 2019, that slide? I think it was a five-year slide, and you were showing how we, how we would come up with the 6.8 million in matching funds, I think.
This slide?
Yes, the one. So just looking at the slide, just a question. Under infrastructure, you'll see in 2017, 3.17 million, and then some smaller numbers, and then in 2021, 4.3 million. Those are the, like, basically two very large sums in those two years and very small ones in the other three years. Could you just expand on the infrastructure requirements there?
So the main expenditure in the 2017, a portion of that 3.1, the main piece of that is the downtown terminal construction. In 2021, most of that is a transit facility expansion. So recognizing that as our fleet grows, we need spaces to store buses and repair buses. So those are the, those are the big numbers within that.
Thank you. So, so that 4.3 million is necessitated by the addition of 21 buses, which would be where a lot of that federal infrastructure money and matching funds would be going to. So it's all tied together. And so perhaps no, no way to reduce that number, and it's a capital number anyway, so it wouldn't help us on the operating side. Is that correct?
Well, I think as it relates to the current PTIF funding, federal funding that's available, we would not put forward either of those big projects. The, the expansion of the terminal in 2021 is outside of the current timeframe, and certainly, even if you gave us direction tonight to go ahead and spend that in an earlier year, we would not be through the design phase and construction phase in the timelines required for project completion under the fund. The downtown terminal is much the same. You know, it would be aggressive to say we would have the terminal opened within the timing requirements of that fund. So, so both of those big items would not likely be forwarded as part of the matching 6.8 that we would be putting forward by October 18th.
Okay, so then to, right to the point again, do you, without having to, obviously, this is a difficult question to answer tonight, but is there any room in the plan to modify the operating requirement to reduce the annual ask in a modest way to help bridge the gap at budget time if we choose to go that route?
That's always an option. There are, there are things that are phased. There are elements within each phase that we may not proceed with. I think what I would say to that is, as I said in my comments, the first two, three years of this plan are, are well-known. They're the needs we've identified, those are the needs that were highlighted most frequently in the public consultation. Those are the things that we likely need to do and need to do anyway, regardless of what modal split we're talking about. Beyond the first three years, though, in the outer years, that's less clear to us at this point. So it may be that, depending on direction we receive from council, maybe more important to work on the things early in the plan and think about how you might do something different with the later years of this plan.
And of course, that might require a change in strategy should the second round of federal infrastructure funding that Councillor Allen mentioned become a reality, that we would have to adapt to that as well. I, I'm wondering if we're gonna get to the end of our questions. I had one other question, because it was brought up by Councillor Bohm, the law of diminishing returns. So you invest more and more money and the benefit, if your money investment is going up like this and your benefit's going up on a more modest level or leveling off, you've got a diminishing returns or a downward curve or a leveling off, right? It seems to me in the modeling that you've got more or less a straight line in the, in the projection, so the, both in the ridership increases and in the, the money required. And I'm wondering if that, is that supported by Professor Casello's advice, or is it more like, you don't know if it's gonna curve upwards or downwards, so you, so you make it straight, or how does that work?
There's no, there's no science to it. We straight-lined it to give us something to look at. So we took the peak ridership to, in, in 2014, 2015, looked at what it would be in 2034, and, and essentially took the difference, divided by 18 years. For peak ridership. For off-peak, though, we modeled that, or I modeled that a little differently, in that the growth there is going to grow at a much slower rate. So it's straight line for peak in the absence of anything else, but slower growth, especially in the outer years for off-peak ridership. That is as sophisticated as the ridership projections are out to 2034.
Okay, so just a final question on that subject, on, on where the growth is and peak, peak and off-peak, and also express and local service. Is there any merit in the modeling, knowing the budgetary constraints that we're under, to throw our money at the highest return areas, the on-peak express routes, and somehow shift buses around and reduce our requirements or modify the plan somewhat? Sort of related to my earlier question about a modest decrease in operating requirement.
The plan that's in front of you, of course, does prioritize additional investment on the express routes, and that's in keeping with the aspirational 15% that the plan was crafted under. I guess I would respond by saying there is always an option to redeploy existing resources in transit on higher priority. And, and there's an example of that this evening in what we're doing on the east side. So that is happening. I would say, though, that what we're seeing even in our local routes, what we are seeing in our local routes is increased ridership. And that is not surprising, because those local routes connect to our higher-order, high-frequency, very high, or very reliable express service. So it's very natural that our local routes are going to see ridership growth, because they are feeders into that mainline service. So of course, the mainline express route is seeing higher increases in ridership growth because they're corridors, because they're getting fed by other lines. But even our lower feeder lines, our neighborhood routes, are growing. So there is always an option to reduce service levels on other routes that are not express. It doesn't seem like that would be probably the right thing to do at this time, given how they support the overall network.
Councillor Senek.
Thank you, Your Worship. Is this half a percent plan based on the city being successful in getting the $6.8 million matching grant? So if we didn't get all the 6.8 million, would you bring it back to council for us to re-baseline and reconsider our options? would you bring it back to council for us to re-baseline and reconsider our options?
We anticipate that, so we are eligible for $6.8 million. That $6.8 million is committed to the city based upon our ridership. So it's not a question of getting the funding or not. If we submit projects that are eligible, then we will receive the funding. So the plan contemplates getting all of the, all of that $6.8 million and we are confident that should we submit projects at that level, we would get all of that money.
Okay, that's good to hear. I just wondered about, where are you saying the plan that there's for the future Woodhaven, servicing Woodhaven? And I just wondered what year and if you could go into the details, like would that route go all the way up Outer Princess Street to Catwoods Drive and then, and it goes north? Like I know you have your map seven and it shows the red lines on Catwoods, but it also shows red lines going down Collins Bay Road. So I just wondered if you could talk about that?
I, I, I think the, well, let me answer the first part. So that's in a later phase, I think 2020, 2020. Okay. So it's in a later phase, phase four. We have not come, we have not yet, Counselor, done any detailed routing on what that will look like to service Woodhaven or areas west of Bay Ridge Drive. We have much more detail on the next two years. We're much fuzzier. We are, we are at the very conceptual level about, under this plan, there will be added service in that neighborhood. So we haven't yet identified the streets, the roads, the network design in that area. I will say though, as part of the development in that area, we have identified locations for bus stops. Some bus stop infrastructure has already, already been pre-built that provides us some options for routing, but that has not yet been, we, we haven't drawn the map yet.
Thanks. Just for us as counselors, we have to think about how we're going to market it to our constituents. So that's why I was asking that question. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
Deputy Mayor? Oh, sorry, Your Worship. I take the chair and I recognize you.
Thank you. I'm just trying to get a pulse of where I think council is at, based on the questions and the comments that have been made up until this point. So first of all, I get the sense, and I'm going to include myself in this, everybody really wants to invest in transit. I think we all agree that transit is an important priority for us. Certainly, I have fully supported the ramping up from $8 million a year to $14 million a year in transit. We've come a long way in the last five years and I think that we've seen the rewards and the results from that. There's no doubt that this plan aligns with much of our strategic plan. However, there is part of our strategic plan that says a maximum tax rate increase of 2.5%. That's part of the plan. So I think that it's important for council to at least have a look at what a transit plan could look like as an alternative that could align with everything in our strategic plan, including that 2.5%, whether that means a transition in, in timing, looking at ways to, to gauge it to assessment growth. So if we can get more growth, then we can invest more now. But in my view, this is all about living within our means. So we get the money first and then we spend it. We don't spend it first. At the same time, I think it's important that we give direction tonight to ensure that we pursue every single federal dollar that's available to us. And I think that that's, again, I think what I've heard from council and certainly what I'm concerned about as well. So I'm, I don't want to in any way cut off further discussion tonight, but I, I do feel that I've heard enough, I think I'm comfortable doing this, to put forward a motion to defer. And I've actually given something to the clerk if we can put that up. That's the one. So basically what this deferral would propose, if I have a seconder, I believe that Counselor Holland is offering to second. But basically what this would propose is that we would, we would defer paragraphs one, two, four, and five from the recommendation in order to allow for staff to come back to us with an alternative plan that would fit within the 2.5% parameter. And then we could go ahead and approve the other clauses that would then give staff the green light to be able to apply for the 6.8 million in federal funding. So Deputy Mayor, Mr. Chair, that's my motion to defer.
So there's a motion to defer for the reasons stated to defer certain clauses, one, two, four, and five, for the reasons stated by His Worship. It's debatable only to time. So would anyone like to debate time? You didn't say when defer time was recommended. I guess you, we'll debate it now. So who would like to suggest time to defer this? Counselor Holland?
Okay. So my question is to time and place. I don't have a time, but one thing I did want to ask is that if the, what is coming back from staff is a version of this plan within a 2.5% tax rate, is there, this is sort of to do with time, loosely to do with time, what, how will that be accomplished? Is it advisable to have input from council on what we want in, to see in that report or not, and how, what timelines would be required for that?
I guess I could ask the mover to state the reason for deferral one more time. Anything else is not debatable.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So the way I see this motion to defer is asking staff to come back to us with what that might look like and then we can decide at that point, is that something that is acceptable? At the end of the day, we could still then go with the original plan, but I think we at the very least need to see what that alternative would look like. And not to say that we couldn't have further discussion and questions and amendments and modifications at that point, but I think as a starting point to hear from staff what that alternative plan might look like.
So what you see there, our clauses, one, two, four, and five from the original recommendation, that's what is, would be deferred with this motion to defer. And it, it is to allow staff, as was just stated, to come back with a further, further option, I guess. So maybe we could ask the CAO what, what kind of, what time constraints we're under and how much time they would need for this work?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So I wanted to maybe give counsel a level of comfort that we would be, the way we would interpret this is that we would be coming back to provide counsel with some, an alternate funding plan for essentially the plan that has been laid out in your five-year plan there. That may include some, a lengthening out of some of the implementations. In other words, it might not be a five-year plan, it might be a six-year plan, but it would address all of the elements that I think you are expressing concern with about the Montreal Street corridor. Would it be in? Yes. Would the, would the reductions in, in fees for youth and all that be in? The answer would be yes. So we don't need the specifics of what would be in or what wouldn't be in. We think we understand it from the holistic nature of the plan and the comments that you have provided here this evening. We are, we've, we've discussed some of this as a strategy this afternoon and we believe that the best time for us to bring this information to you is to incorporate it into the 2017 budget documents. So that when the budget comes, you'll get an update on where we're at with the funding of the plan and how we propose to fund the plan so that it's palatable within that budget that we bring to you. And at that point in time, you can say, that's great, or it's not great. We want to go back and add another half a percent to taxes and, and see what it is. I, I just think that the constraint of trying to report that back by say October 18th will not give us the time to look at the overall budget because they're, they're still, they're being, the budgets are being submitted and we're trying to, we're trying to package it all together within the parameters there that have already been set. But if your direction to us is go away and do the best you can to make this fit within the tax increase, taking into some of the, into consideration some of the things that we've talked about and discussed here tonight, then we'll go away and do that.
Okay. So we've heard since CAO about time and it would be to 2016 budget deliberations in November, I guess. Is that right? Or end of October? So I guess we need a more specific time for the deferral, still up for debate. And I guess implied in that answer is that the funding, the funding can, you can go ahead and apply for the funding if we pass the other clauses from this recommendation. I'm seeing odds. Okay. So I guess back to Your Worship, would you like to suggest a date in November? Or is that wording from the CAO acceptable as the mover?
So I suppose Deputy Mayor, I might suggest we could ask staff whether we should specify that or whether that's sufficient direction for them to come back at budget time.
I guess because the deferral is for staff. So Mr. CAO, you, are you confident you've got the direction as far as the timing at this point for this deferral?
Yeah, it would be either at budget time or before, if we have the information.
Okay. So that, that's the way we'll read then, at budget time or before. So motion to amend, or motion to defer clauses one, two, four, and five, received from the CAO, recommend it be, motion deferred to allow staff time to update the five-year transit plan, having heard the discussion of committee of the whole tonight, including adjusted server level recommendations over the period 2017 to 2021, with a funding strategy to fit within the tax rate parameters of 2.5% established by council. Any other debate on time? And deferral passes. Thank you very much. Back to you, Mr. Mayor. You have the chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Given that we've deferred most of the clauses, there may not be a whole round of additional discussion. But that being said, the only other motion that I would suggest we put forward at this point is that, is to paragraph three, in that it's still speaking to some of the details of the plan, which we have now deferred, but we want to give direction to staff to move ahead with the application for the federal funding. So I do have a, a follow-up motion to amend, to put forward if, if the clerk has that. Oh, thank you. So essentially this motion to amend, if I have a seconder, would be just to, Deputy Mayor, I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you choose the second.
Counselor Bohm, Counselor Bohm seconded.
So this essentially is just to remove the specifics of the plan until we can make that final decision on the transit plan in the future. But this would give direction to staff to move forward tonight with proceeding with the application process for the federal funding. So it's really more, in, in my mind, I would consider this more of a housekeeping of amendment at this point.
So we have a motion from Mayor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Bohm, to amend the remaining clauses. So that's clause three, sorry, not clauses, just, just clause three, to read as follows, that clause three, report 94 from the CAO, be deleted and replaced as follows, that council authorize staff to submit a grant application to the maximum amount of $6,836,123 under the Federal Public Transit Infrastructure Program. Do you have anything else you'd like to say, Your Worship? Who would like to speak to the amendment only? Just, just clause three. Counselor Neal?
Just very quickly, two quick questions to CAO Hunt that I meant to ask before, if I might. Is public transit an allowable expense under local improvement? And are we exploring that as an option? And I know Counselor Glover, over the years, spoke often about the fact that with the 1% surcharge, which we all support, we are gradually catching up on our, our infrastructure that was behind for some years. Is there an opportunity to allocate some of that 1% in future if we continue with that program to public transit?
Allow the question, CAO. Remember that we're talking on the amendment only. Go ahead.
Thank you. So to the first question, from a local improvement perspective, it would not apply as it would relate to operating or an investment cost. If it was related to a bus shelter on a particular street or something like that, you might be able to stretch the local improvement act to be able to get that funding through the local improvement levy. With respect to the second question, yes, part of the analysis that staff will, will do and will factor into the funding decisions to achieve the results that you've directed tonight would be to look at allocating some of that 1% in the outer years into the transit capital program so as to compensate for some of the financial requirements that have been part of this particular discussion.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other, anyone else which speaks to the amendment only? Seeing none, we will vote on the amendment that you see up there. Please vote. And that carries unanimously as well. Back, the chair is going back to you, Your Worship, for the remainder of the recommendation.
Thank, thank you very much. So we are now at a recommendation as amended, having deferred several clauses and amended one. So just, just so everyone's clear, so what we now have in front of us is the amended clause three and then clause six and seven. So given that that's what's in front of us, essentially speaking to the application for federal infrastructure funding, is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the motion? Deputy Mayor Strepp?
I just wanted to make the point that about the 15% aspirational goal, by coincidence, tonight we have two transit users, myself and Counselor Neal. That's exactly 15.4% of council. So we're already there. We're already at 15% and actually a year ago, we were at 0%, I believe. I believe we were, okay, we were at seven and a half percent a year, 7.7% a year ago. So we've just got there in one year. And so as far as the aspirational goal, I think it's absolutely attainable and maybe attainable with less investment, but we wouldn't want to fall short of that aspirational goal for not trying. So in general, I am, I am in favor of doing whatever we can to reach that aspirational goal within the budgetary limits we've already committed to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other questions, discussion, then we will call the vote then on clause three as amended and then clause six and seven. Please vote. And that carries. Mr. Clerk, can I see? Okay. So moving on, now we have a motion to rise from the committee of the whole. And for the clerk to report. Please, oh, do you need a mover and a seconder? Mr. Clerk? Do you need a mover and a seconder for that? Or do you have one listed? So can I have a mover and a seconder? Everybody raise their hands, so just pick two people randomly, that's good. Okay. Okay. Okay, please vote. And that carries. Nothing out on our agenda. Is there any other business? Okay, sorry, we actually have to go through the exercise of reporting what we just voted on, so everyone hang tight. I'll allow the clerk to report.
Okay, so we have a deferral for Report 94, clause 1B, clauses 1, 2, 4, and 5. Clause 1 being that council approved the Kingston Transit Business Plan 2017 to 2021, attached to Report 16-304 as Exhibit C. And that clause 2, that council approved the recommended 2017-2018 service enhancements identified in Exhibit A of Report 16-304. Clause 4, that council directs staff to incorporate the 2017 to 2018 service enhancements identified in Exhibit A of Report 16-304, and the fair strategies identified in Exhibit B of Report 16-304 into the 2017 and 2018 operating budgets. And that in order to, I'm sorry, in clause 5, that in order to fund the 2017 and 2018 service enhancements identified in Exhibit A of Report 16-304, council approved an incremental tax increase of 0.5% in both 2017, 2018, above and beyond council's directed annual tax rate increase of no more than 2.5%, inclusive of the 1% increase for infrastructure investment.
So we'll now take vote just to reaffirm the deferral that was approved in Committee of the Hall.
Please vote. And that carries.
Okay, our next vote will be on clauses 3, 6, and 7. Clause 3 was the clause that was amended, and that reads that council authorize staff to submit a grant application to the maximum amount of 6,000, 6,183,123 under the Federal Public Transit Infrastructure Program. Clause 6, that the chief administrative officer and the city treasurer be granted delegated authority to enter into any agreements required, including transfer payment agreements related to the Public Transit Infrastructure Funding Program. And clause 7, that staff continue to pursue senior-level government funding in recognition that the enhancement of grant funding for both operating and capital purposes will be essential in support of a 15% mode-share objective.
Please vote. That carries. Is there any other business? Motion to adjourn, please. Oh, bylaws, sorry. Almost there. Mr. Clerk, master bylaws.
Moved by Counselor Sinek, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaw 1 be given its first and second reading.
Please vote. That carries.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Camden, that bylaw 1 be given its third reading.
Please vote. That carries. Motion to adjourn moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Bohm. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.